Yes.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Rule call first, staff?
Attendance is noted.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of March 26th and April 23rd, study session. Any comments or ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address anything that's not on the agenda tonight, so if you have some item that is not on the agenda, this is your time to come forward. Okay, seeing none. Move on to the first item. First item is consideration of zoning ordinance amendment, final development plan and conditional use permit for a planned unit development that would allow construction of a 70-unit development that includes 18 townhomes and 52-unit apartment building on 7641 Pleasant Avenue, the former Richfield Public Works Garage property and former Gleason Mortuary at 211 West 76th Street. Staff?
Thank you Chair Jabs. Just by way of background, I'm gonna go through the staff report that was provided to you. Ron Clark Construction and Design, doing business as Conley Development LLC, originally submitted a land use application related to a proposal for a 70-unit L-shaped apartment building on February 21st, 2012. The developer then submitted a revision to their initial land use application on March 21st of this year. This revised plan proposed the developers' purchase of the two city-owned parcels and the HRA-owned parcel along 76th Street for use as open space in a drive aisle. Concern was expressed to the developer that even with the proposed additional land, the concentration of the density was unbalanced on the site with the bulk of development located on the southernmost portion of the property, leaving the remainder of the site underdeveloped. Due to this concern, the developer withdrew their initial land use application on April 3rd. On April 30th, the developer submitted a new land use application for the construction of a 70-unit development that includes a 52-unit apartment building and 18 townhomes to be developed on all of the city-owned parcels and the HRA-owned parcel along 76th Street. The current application still proposes for all the units to be 100% affordable as required through the MHFA tax credit financing that the developer secured in 2011. The developer has also requested tax increment financing. This request will be considered by the City Council and Richfield HRA under separate action and is not part of the consideration of land use approvals in front of you on this item. The developer has stated that the two existing single-family homes and the HRA-owned single-family lot at the southwest corner of 76th Street and Pillsbury Avenue are not part of this application and that they have no plans on developing these properties in the future. The planning commission was originally scheduled to take a number of actions at tonight's meeting related to this proposal. Those actions included the one that's in front of you right now, related to rezoning the property and a conditional use permit. Secondly, a consideration of whether the proposed TIF plan and related documents are consistent with the comp plan. And third, a consideration of whether the sale of both city-owned parcels and HRA-owned parcels for inclusion in the development is consistent with our comprehensive plan. The item related to the TIF plan, however, is dependent upon the completion of a draft TIF plan, including the but-for analysis that is part of a TIF plan. We have attached a letter from HRA attorney Julie Eddington that describes our lacking a piece of information to be able to complete that document. The result is that a completed TIF plan could not be included in the agenda packets and the planning commission will not be able to make a determination on the TIF plan consistency with the comprehensive plan. You know, we've heard from you on a number of occasions that you don't want to make decisions on this important project in a piecemeal manner, so we're suggesting that on all three of these items, that a vote on the items be tabled. The first item has been advertised as a public hearing. We think it's appropriate, especially given the turnout, that you open the public hearing, take testimony, and that you engage in discussion as a commission. And then continue the decision-making, the vote on this item. That's for two reasons. One is, as I said, the TIF plan isn't ready and you've expressed that decision or that desire not to go forward in a piecemeal manner. Secondly, with the approvals that would be necessary in this first item, a resolution would need to be drafted. That resolution has to have findings typically between staff and legal counsel. We prepare those findings in advance. On this particular project, we quite frankly are a little bit of a loss for what direction you'd like us to go in preparing those findings and didn't want to be too presumptuous in putting those findings together, so there really are two reasons for tabling the vote, but having the discussion. I'm gonna go through some of the policy issues associated with the development, so this is page three of the staff report. First, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designation of this site is for medium-high-density residential, which allows a range for 12 to 24 units per acre and no greater than four stories in height. The current proposal before the planning commission meets this requirement at 24 units an acre, so an amendment to the comprehensive plan is not required for this proposal. Second, the zoning ordinance amendment. A change in the zoning ordinance designation of the parcels will ultimately be required regardless of whether or not this project goes through. The only reason that the zoning was not changed to MR3, which is high-density residential, following adoption of the comprehensive plan, is that discussions with Ron Clark had already begun and city staff opted to defer rezoning the property to avoid possibly rezoning it again once a proposal came forth. The MR3 zoning district is consistent with the density designations prescribed by the comprehensive plan. The MR3 zoning district permits by right multifamily dwellings with 20 or fewer units. Multifamily dwellings with more than 20 units are subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. Given the size of this parcel and its comprehensive plan designation, the MR3 zoning designation would be the appropriate choice to bring the parcel zoning designation into agreement with the comprehensive plan. Really, one thing you need to consider is, and I don't know if this stated it plainly enough, right now the comprehensive plan and the zoning are out of alignment with each other. The current zoning of the site is industrial for most of the site. The comprehensive plan designation is for medium-high-density residential, again, that 12 to 24 units an acre. So one of two things ultimately has to happen on this property. Either it has to be rezoned to MR3 to come into compliance with the existing zoning ordinance, or you would have to change the zoning ordinance to some other designation other than medium-to-high-density residential. I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan. The developer has applied for a zoning change to planned multifamily residential. Planned unit developments, or PUDs, are intended to encourage the efficient use of land and resources and to encourage innovation in planning and building. PUDs provide flexibility in the application of guiding district dimensional requirements, densities, and land uses if the proposed development is well-designed and can be successfully integrated into the neighborhood. The guiding districts for a planned multifamily residential development are the MR2 and MR3 districts. The developer has indicated that if the planning commission and/or city council were to desire it, they could follow kind of the strict zoning requirements without a PUD. The PUD that they're proposing, they believe, is in response to neighborhood concerns and to concerns they've heard from policymakers. And I think that at some point in time, you could ask them, or they could tell you how their proposal differs from what would be required under a straight zoning. The purposes of the MR2 and MR3 district regulations are to, and I'm quoting here from the zoning, "are to reserve appropriately located areas for multifamily residential dwellings while preserving as many as possible of the desirable characteristics of single-family districts; to provide opportunities for infill housing development, thereby allowing greater intensities and a wider variety of housing types; to minimize traffic congestion and avoid the overloading of utilities by preventing the construction of buildings of excessive size or density in relation to the surrounding land, buildings, or infrastructure; and to provide multifamily residential areas that are safe and attractive." As mentioned above, in order to encourage efficient land use, PUDs provide flexibility in the application of requirements when the development is well-designed. The developer has submitted a final design proposal, which is Tab 7 of their site and landscaping plans. I'm gonna pause there for a second just because I'd mentioned Tab 7. Typically, your planning commission packet would be much thicker than the one you received because it would have all kinds of plans attached to it and those types of things. The developer did provide their application in much greater detail. This was provided to the planning commission. Every document on here has been online on the city's website for at least a week or more, so this is readily available for anybody to look at. The city has what's called the Administrative Review Committee, which is comprised of staff members from all city departments. This committee meets on any big project so that members of the Police Department, Fire Department, Utilities, all these other departments can have a look at the plan and identify any concerns or issues that they might have. The comments from the ARC meeting as it relates to this project are, "The staff comments stated that the proposed development did not meet the requirements for buildings to be oriented to the public street and only partially met the requirements for exterior appearance of the building to be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. The six-unit townhome building along Pillsbury Avenue is approximately 24 feet from the street and oriented in toward the proposed development. It should be noted that staff prefers having the townhomes closer to and oriented to the street to provide a more residential setting. The developer has stated that they are setting the, they're proposing the buildings be set back further and to be oriented toward the interior of the development in an effort to address neighbor-identified concerns. Bicycle parking is required for parking lots with more than 20 parking spaces and bicycle racks are required to be provided at 5% of the required parking spaces. The developer has proposed seven bicycle racks. All were initially located in the underground parking area. Staff asked that some sort of bicycle parking be moved to the outside near the main entrance of the apartment building, and the developer has complied with that request. Pedestrian lighting is required along 77th Street that matches the existing pedestrian lighting throughout the community. The developer has provided pedestrian lighting as asked for in the ARC comments. Zoning code requirements related to lot size, building coverage, unit size, lot coverage, trash and recycling, screening of mechanical equipment, parking, bicycle parking and access, landscaping placement, design, irrigation, window and facade treatment, and lighting are all components of the zoning code that are met." I'm gonna go through some findings that would be necessary for the approval of a planned unit development. One, comprehensive plan policy 510, promote the development of a balanced housing stock that is available to a wide range of income levels. The city's comprehensive plan designates this block as medium-high-density residential. The developer meets the designation through the proposed purchase of additional city and HRA-owned parcels. The comprehensive plan includes goals to provide a variety of housing types at a variety of prices through development of a safe, walkable, and transit-friendly development that can be integrated into the surrounding community. Many of the, as we go through this, a lot of what we're talking about are kind of black and white issues, technical issues, that staff is able to address. This is one example, again, going back to the policy. To promote the development of a balanced housing stock that is available to a wide range, to a range of income levels. You know, there's some subjectivity in the way that that's written, and ultimately, you know, that's not for staff to determine, that's for you as policymakers. Two, the proposed development is designed in such a manner as to form a desirable and unified environment within its own boundaries. This requirement is met. The development will provide an attractive, safe housing option with many amenities that renters desire. Three, the development is in substantial conformance with the proposed intent, the purpose and intent of the guiding district, and departures from the guiding district regulations are justified by the design of the development. In this case, the development is in substantial compliance with the intent of the guiding MR2 and MR3 district. Deviation from city regulations have been allowed in order to screen surface parking and provide more screening to surrounding single-family residences from the proposed development. Four, the development will not create an excessive burden on parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities and utilities that serve, or that serve the area proposed to be developed. The city's transportation engineer, recreation director, and public works departments have reviewed the proposed plans and do not believe that the development will create an excessive burden on parks, streets, or other public facilities and utilities. The superintendent of Richfield Public Schools has been informed of the details of this project, but neither he nor the board has taken a position on whether the proposed development would have any impact on the school district. Five, the development will not have any undue adverse impacts on neighboring properties. By design, the zoning code includes some requirements and findings that are subjective, as I said. Undue adverse impacts can mean different things to different persons. This is a requirement to be weighed and decided upon by individual members of the commission and ultimately by the city council. Six, the terms and conditions proposed to maintain the integrity of the plan are sufficient to protect the public interest. The final development plan, which establishes the terms and conditions of the development, will be drafted to meet this requirement. The planning commission should decide whether the proposed development satisfies each of these required findings, 1 through 6, that I've gone through. Again, because this is over 20 units in size as proposed, it would require a conditional use permit, and a conditional use permit has a number, has seven criteria that must be met as well. Comprehensive plan policy, I went through on number one of the previous one. Two, the proposed use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. The purposes of the MR2 and MR3 districts are to reserve appropriately located areas for multifamily residential dwellings while preserving as many as possible of the desirable characteristics of single-family neighborhoods. And actually, I'm not gonna read through this because that was one that I went through on the previous one. The proposed use is consistent with any officially adopted redevelopment plans or urban design guidelines. In this area, there are no officially adopted redevelopment plans for the site. The corridor housing initiative, which was a process that the city went through in 2006, recommended low-to-medium-density housing of two to three stories, designed to blend in with the neighborhood through building and site design, to include pedestrian and safety-oriented elements like sidewalks and porches, and which would be affordable to low-to-medium, sorry, affordable to low-to-middle-income families and/or seniors. That's not in quotations, but that's pretty much a direct quote from the corridor housing initiatives report that was accepted by, I believe is accepted by the planning commission, HRA, and city council in 2006 or 2007. Number four, the proposed use is or will be in compliance with the performance standards specified in Section 544 of the code. The response is that the proposed development is in substantial compliance with the performance standards specified. Deviations have been permitted as part of the PUD process to help address the development's relationship to the adjacent single-family neighborhood. Five, the proposed use will not have any undue adverse impacts on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing proposed improvements. And there, as stated before, there are or will be adequate facilities, utilities, streets, and services to support this proposed development. Six, the use will not have undue adverse impacts on the public health, safety, or welfare. Staff is unaware of any specific threat to the public health, safety, and welfare associated with this proposal. Seven, there is a need for such use at the proposed location. Again, the comprehensive plan designates the proposed parcels as medium-to-high-density residential that would allow a density of 12 to 24 units per acre. And finally, number eight, the proposed use meets or will meet all of the specific conditions set by this code for the granting of such condition use permit. The planning commission should decide whether the proposed development satisfies each of these required findings. Just quickly going through what's identified as critical issues. Number one, that the approval of this rezoning is contingent on the city and HRA agreement to sell their properties to the developer, and approval of the final development plan and conditional use permit are contingent upon the rezoning and approval of a proposed plat. Second, the comprehensive plan housing policy is to promote the development of a balanced housing stock that is available to a range of income levels. Third, the comprehensive plan future land use, wow, this is redundant, but does identify the site as medium-to-high-density residential for 12 to 24 units. The proposed development does provide new, larger apartments, a unit type that is currently lacking within the city. And finally, while classified as affordable housing, the proposed development will have rents that exceed the average rent in the city by $150 to $200 per month for similarly-sized units. Staff notes that this is testament to the age and declining market appeal of much of the existing rental stock in the community. So with that, I would stand for any questions you might have. You know, I think probably the most appropriate thing to do would be to have a site plan maybe shown at some point. If Christine or the developer wanna get one up?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hall?
I have some questions, actually, and I think there are some things we should get out of the way, or at least clarified before we proceed. I'm wondering, first of all, what would be the wisdom of moving the planning commission vote to next month? And in conjunction with that, how would that affect the schedules of the HRA and the city council if we do continue this item to Monday, June 25th?
Okay, we'll address them one at a time. You know, staff has looked at the overall schedule for this. I believe we've plotted out a schedule that could accommodate having the planning commission make this decision at the June 25th meeting. The things that would have to happen differently than what would have happened if the decision were to be made tonight are that the HRA and city, any decision that they might make to sell their land, well, that's on the next topic. On this topic, probably the greatest impact would be that the city council has indicated that they do not wish to make a decision only one day after the planning commission would give their recommendation vote. So in that case, normally, or previously, the plan was to have this land use decision go to the city council on June 26th. If the planning commission were to vote on this on June 25th, we would recommend pushing the city council decision to the first, or I'm sorry, the second Tuesday in June, I'm sorry, in July, and I don't know if I have that date in here. But it would essentially push the city council decision one meeting further back is the end result.
Also, contrary to what Mr. Stark stated in a recent joint study session, the planning commission did pass without debate a rule requiring agenda items to be received 28 days in advance. In that case, I believe the planning commission would have to waive this rule, and I would only vote to do that with the stipulation that if the applicant or the opposition is given an opportunity to speak, then the other side should be given equal time without regard to who speaks at this public hearing. When would such a motion be in order?
First of all, Chair Jabs and Commissioner Hall, can you restate the bylaw change that you were mentioning?
Agenda items must be presented 28 days in advance of our meetings. It passed without discussion.
Chair Jabs and Commissioner Hall, I guess that is an issue of interpretation.
Mr. Stark, you sent me an email concurring with that, but some other issues that I thought we'd address at a different time, but...
I don't argue that the bylaws state that the planning commission will accept all applications no later than 28 days preceding the regular planning commission meeting. My belief is the intent of that means that the planning commission staff would receive applications 28 days in advance of meetings. That's how that, that's how that section of the bylaws, which is Section 4, deadline for hearing items, has always been interpreted.
I don't disagree with that. But items for the public, the planning commission agenda must be received 28 days in advance. That's what we said.
Applications must be received 28 days in advance.
Right.
And in this case, the application...
So all I'm asking for is whether or not we should be making a motion to waive that if indeed it's in effect here, and if it is, that people from both sides may talk if indeed one side or the other is given permission to talk.
First question, John. Clarification, was the application received 28 days?
Yes, the application was received on April 30th, which was at least 28 days prior to tonight's meeting.
So there's no issue at that point? We're done?
That's the way I would view it?
Nevertheless, if I may, I would still move that when the time comes, whenever it is, that both parties give an opportunity, get an opportunity to speak at the...
Well, Bob, this is gonna be a public hearing, so you're right, they will each get a chance. Any other idea?
I'm talking about the June 25th meeting. If we're continuing this to June 25th. Mr. Chair, I've seen, I've seen...
Point of order.
... exceptions made to the rules that allow one party to get way more time than the other, and I'm just trying to equalize the opportunity to speak to the issue.
I'm gonna tell you first, let's get through the first of this process, and that's tonight's meeting, and then we can deal with the next meeting as that comes forward. Right at this moment, we know that we are gonna have a public hearing and everybody's gonna get a chance to talk. So let's stay with this meeting and forget about the next meeting at this point. We'll come to that.
What I said was, when would such a motion be in order?
Bob, nothing's been decided at this point. So from this point, let's deal with this meeting, get this meeting done, and then move on.
Chair Jabs, if I could just respond to the question, the motion would be in order at, on June 25th.
Okay. Thank you.
I got momentarily confused here. Bob, you're talking about agenda items. When you're raising your question, you said agenda items. John was saying application. Two different things.
He's, we, I concur, there is no issue there because of the choice of words. Okay? Okay?
Okay. Any other question of staff? Christian Root.
Just going forward, I just want to have a really very clear idea, who owns what at this point? So we all, just my own frame of reference when we're talking about this going forward, where do we stand at this moment? 7601, I'm estimating here on, 7600 would be Ron Clark, 7604 would be HRA, and 7608 would be private.
Well, if we could move on to the next question, we're going to go grab a graphic that will visually show you all of that.
Another question? Go ahead, Bob.
I'd like to bring up the fact that several City Council and HRA members indicated that they have been contacted by Ron Clark. In the interest of full disclosure, I believe the planning commissioners should also state whether or not they have been contacted, and I will start. Mr. Clark did not contact me. After a joint study session in April, I sent a list of 24 questions for answers that I hoped to get that night. Mr. Stark and Mr. Clark, or their surrogates, each answered some and both answered a few. Mr. Stark distributed copies of the questions and answers to City Council and Planning Commission members. Later in this public hearing, I will share what I believe are the most important issues. I am particularly concerned about the missing TIF application and Item 8 dealing with the tenant selection plan, which Mr. Clark said has not been approved. Since the MHMFA deadline has passed, I am concerned that all of this discussion is fruitless.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to state that they've heard from Ron Clark? And if so, this is your opportunity.
For the record, Mr. Clark called me, I believe it was February, April, March. I had called you and I asked you a question in regard to the low-income tax credits. You returned my call. You explained your situation with those tax credits. Other than that, my only contact with Ron Clark has been to exchange pleasantries at these meetings.
I was contacted just to let us know that the new design was out there. At that point, there was no other discussion. Satisfies that. Okay. I want to lay the ground rules for the discussion and just make sure that everybody understands the importance of this, to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. We will have, you know, obviously, a public hearing coming up in just a few seconds. The applicant, first of all, though, will have 20 minutes to state their case and present that to us, along with their new plans. Members of the planning commission can question the applicant. Each member will be given five minutes to do that. They need to be recognized by the chair in order to keep consistency and make sure that we're holding down the fort here and making sure the meeting is productive. I'm going to ask at that point, too, that there's no interruptions from other commissioners when the person is asking the question, and that they get to be heard entirely as far as their thoughts and what they have as far as questions. I'll open up the public hearing, and each person will address the chair and state his or her name and address, as well as sign in the official sign-in sheet that's at the desk. Each person will be given up to five minutes to give their points. If any group has anyone designated as a representative, they can forfeit their time to speak and give it to that individual to present the group's case. And I guess we have one person that is interested in doing that, and so anyone that is identified with that group as part of your constituency then would not be allowed to speak. You'll take their time, basically. Okay? In addition to that, there'll be 30 minutes at the end of the public hearing for the commission members to address staff with any questions that still remain relative of the staff that might not have been clarified as we went through the presentation. I'll ask at that point to close the public hearing, and once it is closed, there'll be no further comments from the public. The commission will then discuss and clarify the action, and I want to just reiterate what John has presented, is that the items before the commission and the public hearing are consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment, the final development plan, and the conditional use permit relating to Pillsbury Commons. We want your input on whether the required findings are met for the planned unit development. We want your input whether the findings are met to issue a conditional use permit, and we want your input as to whether the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm asking for everyone to respect each other's moments and opinions and thoughts and presentation. I would ask you to refrain from clapping, shouting, outward gestures of any type. Let's be respectful of each other's time and give everyone a chance to be heard that wants to be heard. And that will make the meeting much more productive if we go through that process. And I'm just going to say that we'd like to, you know, wrap things up as early as possible, but again, I will give everyone a chance that needs to speak, a chance and an opportunity to do so with five minutes at a time. I will let you know that if there's anything that becomes redundant, I may stop you in the middle of it and ask for new opinions and thoughts, because this process is to get all the ideas and such on the table. So everybody's, you know, time is valuable, and we understand that, so let's make this as productive as we can. And again, I thank you for being respectful, courteous, and civil in our discussion. With that, we'll open up the public hearing and give the developer 20 minutes to present their case.
Chairman Jabs and members of the planning commission, again, my name is Jim Susag. I'm an attorney at the Larkin Hoffman Firm in Bloomington, address being 7900 Circes Avenue South. And I'm here tonight to present the applicant's case, and I just hit start on my stopwatch to be mindful of the 20 minutes that's been provided. Just quickly, on the TIF issue, the application was finalized and sent on Friday, May 25th. One alternative to moving the City Council meeting to the July date, and I've discussed this a little with Mr. Stark, was to have a special planning commission meeting. So all the discussion that you mentioned, Chairman Jabs, would occur tonight. All the public hearing would be closed, no vote would be taken, and then we would just discuss the TIF issue at that meeting. The date we discussed was June 19th, and that would be in keeping with the timing issues that have been discussed tonight and at previous meetings. So I lay that out there as an option. I want to move quickly through some things. I think folks have seen the team introductions, so I'm going to move to the purpose of the development. We think it fills a much-needed project in the city. It's a project that has been specifically identified as being in a gap or a need by the city's consultant. We think the site plan is balanced. It's a 52-unit apartment building and 18 townhome units. I think folks are familiar with the site, and I think it was Commissioner Root, you asked the question of what's owned by who, and if you look on there, you can see there's a city parcel, an HRA parcel, and then on the northwest corner of the site, and it's hard to see on that overhead, there's another city parcel. There's two city parcels and an HRA parcel. There's a rendering that was submitted as part of the documentation, and then you saw the site plan. So the site plan has gone from a 70-unit apartment building to a 52-unit apartment building, and then four townhome buildings that you see spread throughout the site. Satisfies the zoning, as been discussed tonight. We think it's compatible with the surrounding land uses. We feel it's very neighborhood-friendly, and it provides for a safe, walkable community at that location. This just shows the sidewalk as it lays out. And so what's the plan? Well, right now, it's an unused site. There's contamination, it's blighted. If you've driven through there or walked through there, you can see it for yourself. And we are proposing to purchase the city and the HRA parcels at a determined market value, a market value that's been termed by the city's appraisers, and again, bring that back to a very good project, one that's going to be managed by Stephen Scott Management, and Barv Halverson from Stephen Scott is here tonight to address any questions. It provides the amenities that folks are looking for in new apartment units, and you have that list up there, and I'm going to sort of earmark that as I go through, because you're going to see that again. This is a three-year plan that's been ongoing. There's been significant neighborhood input, significant input from this commission, from the HRA, and from the City Council, and there was the City Council resolution from June 2001 that sort of set Ron Clark in the direction that it's been proceeding. And I'm not going to go through all the history in great detail, but there has been revisions to the plan, and I'm going to discuss that a little bit later, but the plan that you have today is one that we're very proud of. It's a plan that we've talked through with city staff. It's one that makes full use of the site, all areas of the site, and it spreads the townhomes over the site, and really, we think blends in well with the existing neighborhood. Now, what it doesn't do, different from some of the prior plans, is it doesn't include any of the single-family lots or homes along Pillsbury. It, like I said, has the permissible density, and we have, there was a criticism before that we hadn't provided the city with offers to purchase. You now have those, we've signed those, and we delivered earnest money. The L-leg of the apartment building, if you will, has been taken out. So before, it was a leg along 77th Avenue and a leg along Pillsbury Avenue. That leg along Pillsbury Avenue is no longer part of the site plan, as you can see. So you see, here's the rendering on the left from the prior applications, and here's the rendering as it exists now. So that leg along Pillsbury has been replaced with townhomes rather than a multi-story apartment building. It satisfies the city's zoning ordinance, and let me address the question that came up during the staff presentation about what if you used a straight zoning? Well, it's possible to do, but you're going to end up with 12 townhomes and 58 apartment units, as opposed to 52 apartment units and 18 townhomes. Your amount of townhomes will go down, your amount of apartments will go up. So that's why, among other reasons, the PUD was put into place. It's going to clean up the existing lot descriptions. There's an issue with that. This sets out those descriptions. And I'm not hearing a lot of objection so far to the site itself or the site plan or any of those things. So I want to move to, well, I'm going to, before I move that, I want to just mention on the TIF, and we'll come back to this, we can come back to this at that next hearing, but we're only purchasing, in the old proposal, C3. And C3 required $530,000 in TIF financing and $437,000 in developer equity. Now, with the new proposal, we're acquiring C1, C2, C3, and H1. The additional cost of the 18 townhomes, the TIF financing for the city's benefit is remaining the same at 530, and that results in the developer equity of about $1,150,000 as opposed to the 437. And again, there's a rendering of the TIF land area, and you see those spots labeled C1, C2, C3. That sort of big box on the south end is actually two different parcels, one being the flag lot. And of course, in the old proposal, we're going to demolish and clean up the city maintenance garage, which is on the south side of this parcel. Now, we're going to do that in addition to the mortuary building, cleanup of the hazardous materials that are on site. We're going to take the risk of what that is, because again, that amount's not going to go up. And talk about needs analysis. I think the planning commission was at the, when StanTech came in and did their consulting. So they identified these four items as a needs assessment or gap analysis. And this is a slide from their report, and you can see when properties with three or more units were predominantly built in the city of Richfield. Again, that's right from their report, that's not my slide. And they showed this slide as well that shows, as you compare it to other communities in the area, Richfield has a predominance of 1960s-built apartment buildings. So what's this going to do? Well, if you have all these apartments that were built in the 1960s, this is going to provide for amenities, that modern amenities, if you will, that those units simply don't have. Again, according to the report, only 30% have covered parking, only 20% have a community room, less than 10% have a fitness center, walk-in closets, in-unit washers and dryers. I want to spend just a minute talking about types of housing, and there's been a lot of discussion about this. There's market rate. Okay, well, we all know what market rate housing is. That's probably your typical single-family home. And then there's affordable housing, and then there's subsidized. And I want to be clear to everyone in this room and to this commission what we're talking about. Is this a market rate project? It's not. Is it an affordable project? It is. Is it a subsidized project? It is not. And I want to be clear about that. And I think even when you look at market rate housing, there's a subsidy, there's affordability built into even a market rate housing. You know, you have a single-family home, you get a homestead credit. You get your deduction for mortgage interest on your taxes. You get a deduction for your property taxes on your income taxes. So even in a market rate situation, there is governmental incentives built in. Here, the governmental incentives are not built into the rents that people will pay with a voucher, as in the Section 8 situation. They're built into the credits that the developer will receive to build the project, to make it a better project, so the rents are affordable, simply stated. Again, let's talk about the rents. So here's, again, a slide from that StanTech report that shows Richfield as it compares to the other communities. So Richfield is below on the one-bedroom units and the two-bedroom units. And you see that 703 to 811, 894 to 1003. And again, we're not talking about Pillsbury Commons yet, we're just talking about city of Richfield numbers, metropolitan area numbers. Now let's talk about Pillsbury Commons. So, and staff mentioned this, one-bedroom, $787 a month, so that's above the Richfield average. Two-bedroom, $945 a month, above the Richfield average. Three-bedroom is right at 1,107 versus 1,091. And note that the piece on the bottom, medium income in Richfield is 48.7. The maximum income for the family of four that would likely live in a three-bedroom unit is $50,340, which is above the median income in the city of Richfield. So the point here is, is in terms of who's going to live there, those persons are going to be a lot like the current citizens of Richfield, as borne out by the consultants' data that you saw in StanTech's report. And again, Section 8, rent is paid by the government through a voucher. Section 42, residents who live there must be income and program-eligible, rent is capped, and it's not a government subsidized rental program. And again, I want to make that as perfectly clear as I can here this evening. Talk about unit type. Again, there's a lot of one-bedrooms in the city of Richfield. Again, a slide from the StanTech report. Here's another way graphically that they showed this. Pillsbury Commons is going to provide 45 two-bedroom units and 19 three-bedroom units, those same ones that StanTech said are sorely lacking in Richfield. Talk about amenities, I mentioned I would get back to that. Here's the current apartment mix in Richfield and who has what amenities. You can see, except for pools, they're all under 30%. Well, again, here's the modern amenities that this is going to provide, and you can read that list, but they're hitting all those areas... And you can read that list, but they're hitting all those areas that the report is seeing, and frankly, the market is seen as desirable in new rental construction. Talk about affordable or subsidized units. This was, again, a slide from Stantec showing the community comparison. And there was a discussion at that meeting about, you know, but a lot of the Richfield units are, in fact, affordable. And I suppose that's in a small sense, small A sense of the word, as opposed to the Met Council's capital A sense of the word. But if you look at this, you know, the Met Council has determined anywhere from 497 to 765 new affordable units. And let me make a comment about that. If you look at the source report for that, that's not something the city applied for. That's something the Met Council determined by math. So they determine how many units the city is projected to have, and put a percentage of 51% of 1,500 gets you 765. For Edina, for instance, it was 400 units and 212. They applied a percentage of 53% for Edina. So there's a lot less units, but a higher percentage. And I'm not here to compare Richfield to Edina or to get into that whole thing. But I do want to make that point about what the Met Council has said and tie it back to the Stantec report. And again, Pillsbury Commons makes that, fills that need and that gap. Senior housing, it's not a specific senior housing. It's not age-restricted, but we think it'll blend well with the seniors who want to live there, no question about it. I want to turn to dispelling some of the myths. And when I was up here a couple of weeks ago, I said, I want to talk about the things that people don't want to talk about. So let's talk about those. So myth, Richfield should not allow affordable housing when cities such as Edina and Maple Grove fail to do so. I just mentioned that. We have to look at this as Richfield, not what Edina is doing or not doing, what Maple Grove is doing or not doing. You know, this is a Richfield decision and not a decision that should be guided by other communities. And again, that's something that was determined as part of that Met Council process. This location is not suitable for affordable housing because residents of Pillsbury Commons will tip the composition of the public schools so that members of minority racial groups will become the majority. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't think anyone else does, as to who's going to live at this place, but that cannot be a reason to deny this project. And same thing here, that it's going to deprive the public school funds. The TIF district is going to only capture the city real estate taxes, not the amount that's going to go to the schools, not that amount that'll go to Hennepin County, not the amount that'll go to the state. And I want to make sure that's, that's clear. Ron Clark has changed the proposal too many times. Well, the news, the news flash is just about every development requires changes. And the changes we've made have been a direct result of neighborhood input, council member input, planning commission input, HRA input. You heard Mr. Stark say that from a planning perspective, they'd like to turn those townhomes around, but from a reality standpoint, they've been turned inward. That's a direct result of doing what we say we're going to do, which is to listen. But Ron Clark has improperly contacted city council members. There's even an article in the Richfield Sun about that. There's nothing unusual about making those contacts. And more importantly, folks, there's nothing wrong with those contacts. And he has the same access to elected officials as any other citizen, any other applicant. I mean, we just saw the Minnesota Vikings go through a very public approvals process. And did every member of the Minnesota Vikings or their staff live in the city of Minneapolis? Well, of course not. Did that stop them from talking to city officials, you know, to Mayor Ryback? Of course not. And so we don't apologize for contacting people. At the same time, they have no obligation to talk to us. If they don't want to, they just say, we don't, we don't want to talk to you. And the process is really that simple. Pillsbury Commons will decrease the values for surrounding properties. Again, there's no evidence to support this. The Center for Housing Policy has determined, as you look at studies, that that's not true. Now, there's been discussion of this report, the impact of affordable housing on communities and households. If you look at this report, it does say that there may be an impact if it's over 50 units. But you've got to read the report carefully. You read the details, and they're mixing the Section 8, the Section 42, what they determine as old-style public housing with this. And again, you can't compare apples to oranges. It also says in this report, "Studies finding that affordable housing projects have negative, positive, or no impact on neighbor, nearby property values are all common." So you can find a report, folks, that says just about anything you want it to say. You know, there's a report that says it may. I have two reports right here that say it doesn't. So I'm not here to talk about, you know, who, whose report is better written or whose report is more accurate. The fact of the matter is, is I acknowledge what that report says. I don't think it's the definitive word, and it does say may. You know, it doesn't say there's a factual linkage between the two. Same thing with crime. I mean, it's the exact same issue with property values as it is with crime. You know, this idea that this can support market rate apartments or townhomes, we've done a study on that. It's a tough site. You have contamination, you have a railroad track, you have some multifamily buildings to the immediate west, and the market prices cannot be achieved at that location. That, that's really the, where the rubber meets the road on that issue. In terms of that it's going to convert to a Section 8 housing, it requires, MHFA requires 30 years of compliance as a condition, the tax credit. It can't revert. Even if Ron Clark sold it, it can't revert. It's a condition that runs with the land, not with the ownership. That it's high-density, 100% low-income housing. I've gone through that already. It's high-density, if you want to consider the approved zoning to be high-density. And of course, it's not 100% low-income housing. Richfield already has too many apartments. Well, Stantec has already determined that there's specific needs and a specific gap here, and this fills those needs. And then there's this issue about Castile Place, which is over on 76th and Garfield. Now, there was some ice damming in the winter of 2010, 2011. We can all recall as Minnesotans, that was the year when we had near-record snowfall. What the rest of the story is, is that was following 10 or 11 years of no problems. There was no builder fault identified with any ice damming, and there was no lawsuit. And as we stand here, there's not one that's being threatened against Ron Clark. And folks, if you can find a builder who's been in business as long as Ron Clark, who hasn't had a problem with a construction issue, I'd be happy to meet them and talk with them. There's always issues. It's not an exact science. I want to talk about some other comparable projects very briefly, and I'm just going to run through these. So just so everyone's aware, this is not, Richfield is not the first community that's faced this issue. So you have the Carlton Artist Lofts in St. Paul, 169 units, 100% affordable. And you can see that the building outside and the building inside. Southview Estates in Bloomington. Maple Village in Maple Grove. Harrelson Apartments in Apple Valley. Gateway Place in Chanhassen. Quarry View in Apple Valley. Forest Ridge in Forest Lake. And let me end with the city of Rosemont. You know, we've talked a lot about property values and impacts and all this. Perhaps the best thing to do, instead of looking at one of these studies that are talking about sites on the East Coast, is to do what I did. I called the mayor of the city of Rosemont and asked him about this site. So this is on County Road 3 in ConAmerica in Rosemont. And it's that site circled. You'll see there's a 1,200-unit, Lennar, single-family home development right next to this project. Oops. Why is that, it's going backwards here? Sorry. So there's an outside rendering. There's some pictures of the townhomes. They don't exactly look beaten down by any means. And there's a view on the left of the single-family homes directly across the street. And there's a view directly across the street back at the townhomes. These townhomes are right across the street. These 100% affordable, the same thing we're talking about here, right across the street from these homes that you see on the left, which the mayor said were anywhere between $3,000 and $800,000 in that larger development. But here's the quote from Mayor Droste, and it's in this report. But I called him and spoke to him, and any of you can do the same. And this, this quote says it all, folks. He said that they had people from a mile and a half away coming to object to this project. And there, he says, if they had known what it was going to be like, they wouldn't have thought that big a deal. He said they've had zero, as in none, no issues with that project, even though it's directly next to, on the same side of the street as existing single-family. In fact, the existing single-family was built after this development. So it didn't come first, it came after.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, because 20 minutes is done.
So I don't hear any arguments indirectly raised in opposition to the actual development plan. I think a lot of what we're hearing is the stuff about who's going to be the eventual occupants of the development. And we should think, you should look beyond those issues and return to the site plan and all the benefits that this is going to provide to the city. It's going to provide the needed workforce housing, the two and three-bedroom units. It's going to put this back in the tax rolls. It's going to allow the city to recoup its costs. It's going to clean up a contaminated property. It's going to provide jobs. It's going to provide $65,000 in building fees. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do the commission members have any questions?
Are we going to be commenting now, or are we going to comment afterwards, or a combination?
You can ask the developer at this point questions, if you wish. Five minutes. Be interested?
There are more comments than questions.
Okay. Move on to the public hearing phase. And if, as we said in the past, if there's a group, then you will be afforded a little extra time. If there's individuals, then they should come forward. Like you to state your name and address, and make sure you sign into the log that's up there.
Chair Jabbs.
Yeah.
While this presentation's getting set up, I would just like to mention that I did distribute a letter from Amy Utley that she had asked to be part of the record.
Thank you. So may I just clarify, will you need 10 minutes, or what's your?
Uh, I'm going to take off.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'm going to take off.
20, okay.
I might come in a little under. I do have a couple of comments. Commissioner Jabbs. Sorry. Commissioner Jabbs, members of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to make a couple of notes before I start on my presentation. I would love to spend all day playing linguistic gymnastics with you, but we don't, I don't have the time to do that. I only have 20 minutes. One of the things that has been discussed, was touched on tonight, is that this is a high-quality project. I say that high quality is subjective. Tom, you took a walk by Castile Place. You saw that the, you saw that the corners, the corners that had been cut in that project. That project was market rate. What's going to happen when this developer goes into a project that doesn't have a recourse for, for complaint?
Chair Jabbs, sorry, I just want to interrupt for one second. Am I sure that you, for the record, gave your name?
Oh, sorry. Jislin Ball, 7627 Harriet Avenue South. It was also mentioned that, that it was, that this is not subsidized. It is subsidized. It's just subsidized to the developer. They've also mentioned that, that, that they've paid for, that they're going to be paying for the cleanup, that they're assuming the costs of the cleanup. The property, the plot of land was discounted by, by the HRA to the tune of $115,000 to compensate the developer for those cleanup costs. So it's not quite correct. We don't know what those cleanup costs are, as of yet, because we won't know until we get in there. But to say that they're assuming all costs is not quite the whole story. The other thing that I wanted to note is that they've, they've mentioned that they've been taking input from the community and from the commissions and from the, from the council. I would say that that's been very selective, and selective hearing. Councilman, Councilman Rogie says, we don't want, you know, we want, we want market rate townhomes. They hear townhomes. So it's just yet another example of this idea of half-truths, not quite the full story. On that note, I guess I'll get started on my presentation. I wanted to note that we're not fighting affordable housing. We're not fighting income-restricted housing. We're fighting this project. We're fighting this project because it does not adhere to best practices as defined by HUD and the MHFA, and it continues to, contributes to residential segregation. Spreading out the units across a larger piece of property, maybe make it, maybe it makes it not technically high-density, but it's still high-density and 100% affordable housing. And the rules of high-density and 100% affordable housing do apply. We've talked, one of the things, how it doesn't, doesn't adhere to HUD, HUD guidelines. HUD guidelines say that the, that housing should not cost more than 30% of the gross and, the overall income of the, of the residents. And yet, Ron Clark, in his own materials, stated that the residents must prove that they're earning at least twice the cost of rent and utilities. Well, that's, that implies that the, the rent is going to be up to 50%, which far exceeds the HUD guidelines. Then, as far as the MHFA goes, it, which was referenced, that, that the, the, sorry. The report that we were, that we referenced does say, it does do, it does break things up. And what the, what John Stark has been saying, and what people have been saying all along, that, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't contribute to, to this, that, and the other. It doesn't contribute to crime, and it doesn't contribute to, to devaluing area, area property values. All of those things are true when you're talking about 50 units or less. When you're talking about more than 50 units, the rules change completely. And we want it, you have to take that into account. So in that, in that instance, in that sense, yes, on page three of this, of this, of this document, it says that high concentrations of affordable housing can have a negative impact. Well, and we're not just talking about these 70 units, and I'm going to get into that later. We're talking about a community that's already supporting an overwhelming amount of affordable housing. And I don't know if that's with a capital A or a little a, but it's, it's all affordable by, by Stantec definition, which was commissioned by this, by the city. So, based on the Stantec report, I know that one of the, one of the questions that we were really hoping to have answered was, what percentage of the rental housing is affordable by metro area standards? Not by Richfield standards, not by Edina standards, by metro area standards. And I think it was Steve Quam who speculated that it was about 70%. It's actually not. It's closer to 95%. And that number was arrived using the Metropolitan Council's own definition of what is affordable housing, broken down to $15,000 a year, or approximately $1,200 a month. Anything under that, according to the Met Council, is considered affordable. Also pulled from the Stantec report, this is the breakdown of the number of units and their approximate costs and approximate monthly rents, and what percentage are, what percentage of the, of units are in that realm. I added a column here, because we've specifically been talking about two-to-three-bedroom units. So I added a column, that column from a, an adjacent graph in the Stantec report to show just how many units are in that, that cost breakdown. Using that table, using that, using that Stantec report, only 22 units are not considered affordable by the Met Council. Only 22 units of the 4,000 units that are in the city of Richfield are not considered affordable. The following are comments, and they're not pretty, comments taken directly from, verbatim, from the Stantec report. Less than 10% of Richfield's rental stock has rents above $100, rents above $1,000 a month. Richfield has 2,749 renter households with annual incomes below $35,000. This is 50... This is 50, 53% of all rental households. Richfield has rents that are, on average, well below the metro area average and well below their peer communities. 45% of Richfield's renter households have incomes below $35,000 and spend more than 30% of their income towards housing. This is higher than the metro rate and one of the highest rates among its peer communities. To give you a perspective, we're, we're living, we're living in Richfield and we're surrounded by this sea of wealth. It's, it's astonishing. For Richfield's largest age group of renters, 25 to 34, the median household income is about $36,000. This is all well below the numbers that they've put, they've proposed. These are, are, are the people who are already living here. Well below the metro area median. Also appearing in the STANTEC report, and this goes, speaks directly to one of the reports that was presented by Ron Clark, going back to November, I believe it was the Joe Urban study. The claim was made that there are, there are between four, two and four jobs in the Richfield area that will need, that will need to provide housing for. Well, according to the STANTEC report, we, at that time, we asserted that the jobs were not in Richfield, they were in Adina and, and Bloomington. And according to the STANTEC report, we were correct. Richfield is not expected to capture a significant share of the area's employment growth over the next 20 years. The jobs aren't in Richfield. However, adjacent communities of Bloomington and Adina are expected to add nearly 20,000 jobs. That's, that's where the housing needs to be built. Median household income of Richfield's renters is roughly $33,000. This is, once again, this is several thousand dollars below the metro area median and near the bottom of its peer communities. For Richfield's, oh, I think I already touched on that. So that kind of gives you a viewpoint of who is current, who the, who the current community of Richfield is. And that's, I'm going to touch on why that's important later. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, we have identified goals and response, goals and policies that I've listed here. And as you can see, none of them directly relate to, to, or directly speak to projects that are 100% affordable. Also taken from the comprehensive plan, and I don't know if I can, and as you, also taken from the comprehensive plan, this is a heat map of the different densities that are, that are being proposed for the city. And this is a question that I do have for the city. I noticed that the, that this was updated in August of 2011. I'm wondering what aspects of that map were updated? And that's going to be relevant shortly. So the plan indicates that the space is targeted for medium to high-density residential, but it does not indicate percentages of market rate and affordable. And in the absence of that directive, one can look at the land use facilities goals and policies for guidance. We need to maintain diversity of housing types and price ranges. Well, based on all the information that's been provided by STANTEC, this product, project would add more affordable housing in a community that's already virtually 100% affordable by metro area standards. And that speaks directly to the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits building a disproportionate share of low-income housing in poor, segregated, or reintegrated but resegregating neighborhoods. And I want you to keep that in mind when I talk about the next points. This data was pulled today from a, from the Public School Review. This is what our, the Richfield High School currently looks like, demographically speaking. Now, now look at that and think about the Fair Housing Act. We're a very poor community. We have 40% of our students in the high school programs who are, who are available to receive free lunches compared to 8% in Adina, 11% in West Bloomington, and 36% in East Bloomington. The Minnesota school average is 25%. We're 22% higher than the Minnesota average for free lunches alone. Now think back to that Minnesota Fair Housing Act. To date, we're not aware of any cost-benefit activities that have been executed by the city of Richfield. Additional costs to infrastructure are unknown. And with respect, Mr. Stark, we, you, you've stated that there's not concern from the city that there will be additional infrastructure costs. You're adding an unknown number of people to an already taxed system. I can't believe that there, that there wouldn't be. We are looking into doing more specific financials, but we'll be presenting that at the city council meeting. Also looking at this project, just some general numbers that we pulled from, from documents that were supplied to the MHFA by Ron Clark Construction and also to the city of Richfield. The estimated cost of this project is $12.6 million. The estimated construction costs, 8.6. Estimated developers' fees, 1.4. That's 1.4 million dollars that's automatically built into that, that 12.6. Four of four of which has been deferred. MHFA funding, he was granted a million credits, which will translate to approx, between 9 and 10 million dollars. And in addition to that, he's requested TIF money from the city to the tune of $530,000. According to his, according to his Minnesota multifamily rental housing common application, the gross potential rent for this project is $746,000 a year. Some more numbers for you. The appraised land value for the entire piece of property was $769,000. Just the south portion, the option agreement was list, was noted, was created at 415, meanwhile the appraisal price was at 531. That accounts for the $515,000 discount that was given for the cleanup costs. The city property alone is $116,000 and the HRA property is being, is being sold for $183,912, when we in fact paid $743,000 for that piece of property. Prior to requesting the purchase of additional property, just on the land value alone, the estimated discount to Ron Clark Construction was $115,000. With the additional requested property, it's down to 52,000. In addition to that, he's also received, and this was pulled from, once again, the multifamily rental housing common application, donation waivers to the tune of $55,000, an additional one for almost $10,000. He got a density bonus for $26,000. He's got flexibility in zoning requirements, 20, almost $28,000. He's getting WAC and SAC reductions to the tune of $52,000. And he also got a $500 credit for fast-track permitting, permits and approvals. Now if you look at, this was pulled directly from the narrative, oh, sorry, this was pulled directly from the narrative, from the worksheet, the worksheet scorecard that was supplied by Mr. Clark, detailing where he gets the, where he got the information from that led to those discounts. And now I'd like to just quickly talk about key dates. And this is actually, I think that this is very, I think this shows really how predatory this, this developer is and how, how Richfield has been targeted. In 2008, he purchased a single-family home located on the corner of 76th and Pleasant for $230,000. That same year, he participated in the Corridor Development Initiative and was essentially a leader in the Corridor Development Initiative guiding the process. April 12th, he was made, the city council was made aware of their intent to submit a project plan. May 16th, preliminary agreement. June 8th, appraisal completed. June 14th, option agreement signed. Within the course of a month, had the option agree, had the preliminary agreement signed, appraisal done, option agreement, bam, bam, bam. That's because it's important to him. He's got to set the, set the stages. So lord knows, that's happening awfully fast. He's Johnny on the spot when it's, when it's money in his pocket. On November 11th, the MHFA awarded 1 million tax credits, in tax credits to this, to this developer. And on April 30th of this year, he submitted a third revision, revision to the project. We're now looking at a six-month gap, six, seven-month gap. And in addition, he's asking for, well, oh, let me go back to that. He also submitted a letter to the city detailing the ranges of additional requested TIF funding. This was before the most, most recent iteration of the project. The original request was $540,000 if additional land for the driveway was not required, and then he wanted $644,000 if we, if we made him put in a driveway. On May 8th, the Richfield, Ron Clark Construction, they talked about how they, how they've put in the earnest money. The earnest money was $1,000. And a purchase agreement, once again, very quick on the purchase agreement, that was sent in May 8th, less than a week after he, after he submitted the, the most recent iteration. Then recently, on May 23rd, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Stark, he was sent a letter by Julie Eddington of the HRA attorney reminding him that the pro forma had not been yet, had not yet been received despite repeated requests, both in writing and on the phone. Once again, not to his benefit, not so quick to respond. To his benefit, very quick to respond. And I think this actually, you know, I think it's really speaks to how this property is going to be managed. You know, we, we can't overlook that. If he's so quick to, you know, doesn't want to spend money, and I get that, but what about capital improvements? You know, what about, what if a window is broken? Is it going to take him six months or six weeks to replace the window? I mean, if this is any indication of his response time when money is required of him, I, I think that's pretty, pretty telling. And you can disregard anything you, you can disregard everything that I'm saying, but the bottom line is that the neighborhood, the community, and the city don't want it. That's all.
Thank you.
And Chair Jabbs?
Yes.
I want to note, I do realize that with some of the text size in the presentation and our limited budget for buying new televisions for the dais, some of the, it was difficult for you to read some of that. Just for the matter of the public record and for a purpose of getting them to you, I would ask that if it's available, if Ms. Ball could email me the presentation, I will get you a copy as soon as I get it. And then that will also be saved as a part of the public record.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to speak to the commission? Please make sure to sign in and state your name and address.
My name is Deb Harms. I live at 6326 Fifth Avenue South. Commissioners, as a lifelong resident of Richfield, homeowner of 37 years and taxpayer, I absolutely cannot understand you even entertaining the idea of letting Ron Clark's current proposal pass. In my opinion, he has not been upfront with the city, and more importantly, the citizens of Richfield will be forced to live with the development they have opposed. It seems like the only winner in this would be Ron Clark should their proposal move forward. There is no advantage to current taxpaying residents. When did Richfield become the city that the only way new buildings, businesses will consider being in our city is when there is TIF involved or federal and state subsidies? I have heard on several occasions that new businesses will not consider Richfield because of our demographics. I can't understand why our commissioners and council members are not striving to improve the image of Richfield instead of focusing on affordable and subsidized housing. I have heard the woes and challenges of first-world suburbs. I look at what a nice job St. Louis Park has done with their Excel share on Grand Development and West End shops and restaurants. People go there to shop and eat outside, out, from outside of the area. What does the commission and council plan for the hundreds of households in Richfield like mine that have paid their taxes, supported schools and businesses throughout the years, and have seen their taxes go up and their market values go down? Since Richfield is landlocked, we should be very wise in the development of available land. I urge you not to allow this project to continue.
Mr. Chair and commission members, Rebecca Bowers, 6529 Knox Avenue. I'm here to speak in support of the project. I realize I'm probably one of the few here, but wanted to take the opportunity to express my support. This project is in appropriate use for an industrial site and a good fit with a neighborhood and adjacent apartment buildings. The existing buildings are an eyesore, in my opinion, potentially unsafe and, from what I've heard tonight, contaminated. And who knows what's in the, what's underneath in the soils in those buildings. This provide economic benefits to the community as well as much-needed housing for working families in Richfield. The vacancy rate in Richfield is very low, it's less than 3%, and it's very difficult for families to find nice apartments to rent here. I've also read that the vacancy rate for three-bedroom apartments is zero. That was from an Apartment Trends report. Richfield residents benefit by having high-quality new apartments, and we saw the rent is actually higher than many of the apartments that are here. Wasn't too many years ago that I would have loved to live in an apartment like that. A couple of points here. I would like to just note that I've done some research on the comprehensive plan and it, and also Mr. Stark's report. It was clear that this proposal met quite a few of the objectives in the comprehensive plan, I just wanted to call out a couple. The proposal would be consistent with promoting continued affordability in Richfield, including the development of new low and moderate income housing units. Would maintain a diversity of housing types and price ranges. Would promote the development of a balanced housing stock that is available to a range of incomes. And it would promote additional housing diversity to serve families at all stages of their lives, including seniors. Would also promote the development of affordable housing in the city by working with other project partners. The Minnesota Housing Application would be a great way to harness some additional resources. And we also saw from about 500 to 765 new affordable units are supposed to be built in the city by our very own comprehensive plan. I'm concerned about how we're going to be able to do that, if when we have projects like this, it's met with such opposition. I know your job is a difficult one. The city of Richfield has also received at least a million dollars, if not more, from Metcouncil, from a variety of different grant sources, transportation sources, housing. There's been a number of grants that we've benefited from. And part of negotiating those affordable housing units with Metcouncil is also, when you get money from Metcouncil, we need to do our share and have new affordable housing units built in the city. So as I mentioned, I'm in favor of this, and I would just want to urge you to vote in support. I also want to ask for your leadership in following the comprehensive plan. I know it's one of the most difficult things that planning commissioners have to do when faced with much opposition as today. And finally, from what I can tell, the developers made a number of changes in response to both city and resident concerns, so I urge that you support it. And I also want to thank you for your service volunteering as planning commissioners. I think this is probably one of the toughest gigs that you have tonight. So thank you for your service and thanks for allowing me to comment.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Manabon. I live at 7525 Neccolet. That is a home that I just bought, maybe nine months ago, and I decided to come to Richfield. And the main reason why I decided to come, it's a very nice strategic place. You can get everywhere. It's, it's a very great place to build a It's, it's a very great place to build a family, to establish. But when I came, there were a whole lot of reservation from people, why are you moving to Richfield? It's an old place, nothing there. You know, the, the homes there are all in the 50s and 40s. But, but I knew what I wanted. And then I, there was this space, and I kept, each time I passed that whole land, I'm like, why is this place still right here? Why is this here? And then I received a lot of communication about this project. My concern is much more about how we politicize the demographic of projects. Why should we be talking about the, the composition of, of population to determine whether a project is, whether a, a, a project is supposed to be approved or not? One of the reasons why I think we are having the problem we have in Richfield is not necessarily Richfield. It's the government as a whole. Governments set up systems and people take advantage of systems. The problem is much more with the government that we have, not the people who take advantage of this necessarily. Look, look at me, who do you think I am? I, I bought a house, I have a master's degree, I work every day of my life since I came to the United States. I have never one day taken government assistance. Most people are like me. All they want to do is live in an, in a place where they can be established and build a life from there. This project, in my opinion, gives that. It doesn't matter, personally, it doesn't matter what the, where on the earth you come from, or what you look like, what the composition. Somebody mentioned that schools, um, people have lunches and stuff. Again, it goes back to systematic problem that we have in our country as a whole, where the whole country is just welfare state. It has nothing to do with who lives in Richfield. I love this place. When I bought my house, I got to know everybody. Yes, I may be different, I speak with an accent, so what? It doesn't matter. What I think we're supposed to be concerning ourselves with is what kind of structure is going to be put in place for this complex that, that will give us exactly what we want? Personally, I want my property value to increase. With that land being there, it's not going to increase. There are a lot of other places around the state that have had complexes, and they coexist with property owners. But I think rather than us being personal, getting into personal details of who, you know, calling names, we should just state facts here. I think this, this, this project is going to benefit me because it's going to help maintain my property value, at least with, with how the land sits there right now. It, it is not going to do me any good. And for God in heaven's sake, folks, let put aside all this crap of demographics. It's so political, it's so tiring, it, it gets nobody anywhere. We supposed to attract brand new people to Richfield, people who can help transform our communities regardless of how you look, where you come from. It doesn't matter. And how do we do it? You put these brand new complexes that people would rather come to Richfield than to go pay $2,000 in Edina or in Eden Prairie or Bloomington. And these people will help revitalize our community, and we will have the balance that you guys talk about, demographical balance. That's why I'm in favor of this project, and I hope you guys can decide what is good for the city and not necessarily what is good for politics. There's a lot of burden I know you got, but it's, it's, it's time to just do what we need to do. Can you just put something in our space beside my house, please? And I want to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Holland. I live at 7245 Seventeenth Avenue. I live very close to the airport. I'm one block off Cedar on Seventeenth, Seventy Second and Seventeenth. I live extremely close to Old Cedar, the whole strip there. Anybody wants to talk about property value and what happens to your property value with some subsidized housing, um, please, please. I, I mentioned this last time I came up here and spoke. Go drive down Old Cedar Avenue. You will see windows out, you will see, um, window treatments crooked, not there. You will see smashed garages. You will see, I have talked to the, I've talked to one of the male people who will not go into one of those buildings. Um, people standing outside, you will see something that looks like out of a movie. It's a, like when, when, like when homeless people burn in a garbage can. Um, there's a couple of garbage cans that just stay there forever. Go, it, it's, it's wind, no curtains, just go drive down there. I also work at 1800 Chicago. I work in a, I work in a county building, and I have talked to one of the most left persons I know who works with the, um, Hannibal County homeless, and I work with homeless people every day that I work. And there are many, many projects in Hannibal County that are coming, coming up with affordable housing. I talked to, it's a normal question to say, so and so, how many apartments is this for you? Because the alcohol, drug problems, sex offending problems, and there's different programs to help sex offenders because they're very difficult to, um, to house, to find housing for, and, um, um, alcohol, and mental health. And I have a question about, um, this attorney that went through and said something about, um, senior, that that, I don't know if he said it wasn't, well, it wasn't established yet, or, I wrote it down here on this little mess here. Anyway, seniors, oh, well blended, that was the word. The seniors would be well blended with a lot of this population. Um, I wish that the people proposing this population would, this project, I mean, would have to go live amongst it or next door themselves. This will affect property. Uh, Richfield has got their share. This needs to be spread out. The one thing I meant to say was, the person who is, who, who is very, very, very left politically, um, said, the problem is this. The intensity of a lot of these people's problems is, um, it, it creates issues in itself. Then you put, um, a lot of people with intense problems in a, in a dwelling like that, when there's many apartments, when there's many housing developments, or apartments is what I'm really talking about, um, then that creates an environment of intensity, and believe me, it's going to happen. This is not a gig. This is an, this is an environment, this is a neighborhood, this is real people with real problems, with real issues. And, uh, Richfield, I wish was looking at, I lived in Golden Valley once, Golden Valley looks good, the woman talked about, you know, St. Louis Park, building up our, our, our community, not, this is not building it up. And I think they've done their, we've done our, our share. Uh, crime prevention, oh, you know, I don't care what statistic you say. And these presentations by the attorney, um, they got slipped through really fast, some of them. A whole lot of attention was given to so-called myths, but, um, a lot of, and I'd like to know if I can get a copy too. You said, ask that woman to email you. I'd like to have an email copy of, of his presentation, um, because a lot of, um, a lot of that was slipped through and, and couldn't read it, couldn't see it. Um, and I'd like to see, see that. Crime, you're going, you know, I wish I could talk to the, uh, Richfield. Rich, I work in a detox unit. We see Richfield in the last couple of years, um, detox, alcohol, drug, alcohol detox, okay? Uh, the, the police bring in people from Richfield all the time. In the last couple of years, there's been increased numbers of, 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 uh, admits from Richfield. Um, and the people with these housing projects, um, many, it down 66 there, down, definitely down Cedar. I see people that I deal with. You know, I, I'm just so emotionally charged, I can't even hardly speak, I feel like, but, um, this is not going to go without its effect. Please, I don't know if anybody, and I sit back here and I go, I don't know if, if you have made up your mind and, and, and nobody's listening, or if you're actually listening to what most of the people here are saying in the community, and, and those who have not had a chance to speak. You know, there's not been enough that, that's, you know, there's so many lies, just lies by omission too. And Bob Hall, please be, keep speaking up for us. Um, don't, don't get, you know, don't get quieted by, by louder voices. Um, louder voices and not always telling the truth. Anyway, go drive down Cedar Avenue, you, and get your, and see the reality of what we're talking about, okay? We've, we've had enough, it needs to get spread out. This is, this project is way too big. I think it's what somebody said, maybe it's, this project is way too big, way too condensed. Believe me, I don't know how many of you live in Richfield, but you're going to regret it if this goes through, you know? And, and, and as far as property value, I would like to sell my house. I'm running a block off Cedar. Okay, I'm going to stop with this. And it's, I'm not going to get as much as my, for my house because of what's happening a block away, unless you'd like to buy it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Barry LeBlanc. I live at 7621 Pillsbury. And while I was listening to the, um, conversation tonight with Ron Clark and his team here, and I've passed out packages to y'all in the commission, on page 17 of 19 of the preference for priorities, it says, "He claimed four points for Minnesota Housing Award for development that cooperatively develops a housing plan and agreement to provide other rental assistance. Section 8, portable tenant base formal recommendation." Can you explain that? The second part, the question about the gentleman getting up, talking about why we're talking about people of color? Or demographics, or whatever. This is the reason why. Ron Clark filled out an application and claimed three, 10 points for marketing efforts, project design features used that will attract underserved population, include collaboration and partnerships with, with members of organizations, which is great. But the development that he's targeting, and he put on his application, defines it as a single household with minor children, individuals in households of color. And that's why we're talking about it, is because Ron Clark started the conversation. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the commission members for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Bob Olson, live at 75th and Pillsbury in Richfield, lived there for 47 years. We chose Richfield because of a nice, quiet community, uh, great schools, shopping, convenient, could ride the bus or my bicycle to work downtown every day. Great location in 65, we moved here, and Richfield has tried very hard, I think, over the years to maintain that, uh, that feel. My concern with Mr. Clark's proposal is that it's driven by funding granted him by the Minnesota FHA, and by data presented in Met Council report inferring that it's Richfield's responsibility to provide affordable housing for workers living and working within our borders. I think Just Lane alluded to this in her presentation. It's re, very misleading, uh, and Mr. Clark stated that in his, his, uh, letter to the city, when he proposed this project, to indicate that, uh, it's Richfield's responsibility to provide all these, uh, housing units. In fact, uh, Mr. Stark, uh, gave me a copy of a report, or not a report, a rebuttal, I guess you'd say, that city staff prepared when the Met Council presented this, uh, uh, this edict that we have to provide 700 or so, uh, affordable housing units. Interestingly enough, some of the arguments we're making today were presented by staff back in 2006 to try and refute that report. Met Council never responded. Um, that's interesting, I think. They apparently don't have the, the data to back up their recommendations. Our proximity to public transportation, shopping, freeways make Richfield an ideal place for folks to use. I can understand why affordable, uh, housing tenants would want to live here. Uh, I think the city needs to, um, look beyond this project and set some, some guidelines for, uh, future developments. In fact, that was presented in the rebuttal letter by this, the, uh, city, that inclusionary housing should be, uh, is one option, uh, which would indicate that, uh, many, uh, communities have developed that, that guideline. I don't know if it can be a zoning, uh, issue or not, but, uh, they recommend that it be all housing be mixed housing, which to me makes sense. I think Richfield tries, wants, needs to attract, uh, people that are, uh, upward, upwardly mobile, not concentrate on just affordable housing. Uh, it's kind of an interesting concept to me anyway. If you build, um, a mixed housing development, uh, 20% of the folks may be affordable housing. When they exceed the, the, uh, income limits for affordable housing, they don't have to move out of Richfield. They can move upstairs, or move by Mr. Clark's design here to a building next door. I think that makes an awful lot of sense. I guess that's my, my point. I guess Richfield needs to look years ahead. Don't, don't let Mr. Clark's proposal lead us in the direction that we maybe shouldn't go. Consider all the ramifications, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm for this very much. I work in the school systems, and I believe this affordable housing-
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ann Doherty. I live at 6844 James, and I've lived there over 50 years. I've seen Richfield in many different stages. I believe this affordable housing, it will be used for housing for people that work in the schools, that people that work in the hospitals, that people that work in other areas, the city hall and other places. It's affordable housing. We do not have enough three, three bedroom apartments in town. I know in the schools, when we have wonderful families that move from a one bedroom with their families to a two bedroom, and then we don't have anything to offer them, and they move to Bloomington. And they get a little bit more affluent, and they go to buy a house, and they end up buying a Bloomington house, and, because they've already moved there. If these families would have the option of a three bedroom apartment in Richfield, they would end up as homeowners here gradually. Um, this affordable housing really is needed, affordable, good housing. This would help bring up our other stock in town. I think we have to look at who manages, and the people that are going to be managing it are good managers, they have a track record. We need to then use that as guidelines for the housing, the apartment housing on Cedar and in the other areas of town. So, I'm, I'm not quite as elegant, but I really think Richfield needs this.
Thank you.
I think, ladies and gentlemen, have mistaken this property-
Excuse me, could you state-
Just one second, could you state your name and address, please? Oh, Lou Hanson, seventy-six twenty-five Garfield Avenue South. I'm not opposed to low-income housing, I think we need it, but this is not the location. This location, according to the Star Tribune, just, well, April fourth, showed the perimeter of the southwest corridor. We're right by it. The Dan Patch Railroad runs right there, runs all the way out to Shakopee. This is a given fact. We have four cities within a half an hour of that location. It's a beautiful location. In case you're looking for housing, I would suggest, look up on Seventy-sixth and Penn Avenue. You have the school there, and you have the whole front that's open. There's a beautiful spot. I think that would go much better, and work with a developer to put the light rail in there, because the governor has stated, and the folks out in Eden Prairie and so forth, are looking for a southwest corridor. We have it right here. We have four ninety-four, we have thirty-five W, Crostown, right in that spot. Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Garrigan. I grew up on Seventy-third and Harriet Avenue, and I graduated, went to grade school and graduated from high school in Richfield. I now reside at seventy-six twenty-seven Harriet. I, just, basically, I think the corridor idea is a fabulous idea with work-live housing, actually bringing businesses to Richfield and people to a place where they can live and work and commute. I think that's a great proposal. Anyway, I went and looked around that particular property, and the adjacent properties to it, and the housing conditions of the older rental affordable housing units in the area. And what struck me is, you know, just how the transfer of those who live in one affordable unit will go to the new affordable unit, and what will happen, and how they compete with each other, because Ron Clark in his own letter that he submitted to the city of Richfield talked about how it competes, and how it might cannibalize other properties, and how that would affect the demographics of what you would find moving in next to the newer development. And I found some interesting discussion to it, and I just would like to read it briefly. But basically, a quote, let's see, as I mentioned above, we've completed, this is from Ron Clark submitted to the city of Richfield. "We've completed a market study in two thousand and eleven to analyze feasible options for the site. The market study identified a need for this type of housing. Our market study says that there are one point nine affordable jobs in the area for every one affordable housing unit. Furthermore, the existing affordable housing stock in Richfield, generally forty to sixty years, and is not attractive to many working people. This provides quality housing choice in Richfield." From the marketing, from the market study, this mention, mentions was done, this was done, actually, June fourteenth, by the Joe Urban, Inc. company for Ron Clark. They have detailed competitive, competitive environmental analysis, looking at eighteen different rental properties in Richfield and East Bloomington they consider as potential competitors, because they contain units with similar rents and income limits as those with the proposed, at the subject property. They state, while, that the rents are competitive in the properties in the following list, lacks competitiveness with Pillsbury Commons, due to their advanced age, and with some their poor condition. They are West Virginian, New Orleans Court, seventy-four twenty-eight Lyndale, Linwood Commons, Portland Terrace, Buena Vista, Winton House, and Colonial Twins. One reason these apartments are so affordable is due to their non-competitiveness because of their age, which are all over forty years old, and with some, their condition. This brings up a point. In cities with too much or too many affordable rentals, new affordable rental projects risk cannibalizing the private market, pushing habitable units into accepting risky and problematic tenants, as you have that population shift. Again, from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency's own report. Oftentimes, government-assisted projects are placed so near one another that newer developments attract tenants from the older developments, cannibalizing one, or on one development's success. Therefore, the older development has higher turnover, creating higher vacancy rates and increased operation costs. This is documented, from a report at the Minnesota Housing Government's website. So, in a nutshell, what we can expect to happen to these older apartment buildings adjacent to this project, with all, Richfield building all sorts of new low-income governments' subsidized rental housing, is for them to rapidly decay as they bring in problem and risky tenants to fill that void. So, just be aware that you're going to have a shift going on in your demographics, and with the newer development, and it might cause problems, and the other surrounding areas to decay, your other rental units. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the Planning Commission, Camila DeSantis, six five oh eight Newton Avenue South. The action items before you, as I understand them, are one is the zoning, rezoning for multifamily residential development, and consideration of a final development plan, a conditional use permit for a planned unit development, or pot or pooed, or whatever it's called. As I read the report prepared by the staff for the commission, both of those actions meet, I think, the requirements of the comprehensive plan, as I understand it. The rezoning would allow medium to high-density housing, which means comp plan requirements based on adequate acreage, if approved by the HRA, of course. The revised Ron Plan, Ron Clark Plan, is an improvement in what appeared to be objections to the previous renditions, reducing the size of the apartments to fifty-two units with the one and two-bedroom units, and separating the eighteen, out the eighteen townhouses which are contained. Three-bedroom units increase the deliverability, in my estimation, and creates a more residential look. The recent rental housing survey emphasizes again, there have been previous studies that have said the same thing, the last four or five years, the need for more rental housing in Richfield. And my question is, why conduct studies if we don't make use of them, which is, which I think has happened in the past? We should make use of the findings and the recommendations. Those who say we have enough rental housing, especially affordable, have to ask themselves, then why Lyndale Plaza? And the forthcoming Lyndale Garden-proposed rental housing, I mean, those are all rental housing units, too, so I don't see the difference, the real objection as to why this rental housing causes such a consternation and problem on the part of many people. In any event, we need two- and three-bedroom apartments to keep families with children in Richfield, and bring families with, more families with children here. It is advantageous for the community to provide new, larger apartments that are currently lacking in the city. As I listen to the dialogue regarding Pillsbury Commons, some of us tend to spend almost all our time on the negatives and the downside of Pillsbury Commons. What has been lost, in my view, is there are seventy families that are looking to you and other city entities for good living situation in our, in our community. While other city bodies still have decisions to make regarding Pillsbury Commons, I urge you to take positive action on the action items before you. We keep talking about multifamily housing. Pillsbury Commons is multifamily housing, one, two, three-bedroom units. There are no other developments, any place in Richfield, that has one, two, three-bedroom units. There aren't any. If there are, please invite me, take me on a tour, and show me where we have true multifamily housing. We do not have it. This is the only development that's ever come across the board for us to entertain. This is not low-income poverty, section eight housing. Barry, and Joe, and my fellow SOSs, it is not a low-income poverty development. It is section forty-two, for people who earn a decent wage, just like everybody else, everybody else in this community. It's very difficult to listen to some of the dialogue, and I'm sure it's difficult for some of you to listen to my dialogue, but, you know, the net result is this, for me. SOS says we support affordable housing, not this development. The bottom line, we don't want those people living near us. You interpret who the THOSER, who those people are. Barry gave you a little hint. They are single-parent families, they are families of color, and that's a misinterpretation of the facts. MFHA would not allow that, that would be discrimination. But that's the message you're getting. Low-income, section eight, poor people, unwanted people. Please listen to that kind of the dialogue. It is clear now, nothing, absolutely no plan will be acceptable to the SOS group, no plan whatsoever. It doesn't matter what Ron Clark does.
Camila, you-
You can make all the modifications he wants.
You need to wrap it up.
It isn't gonna, it isn't gonna happen. The SOS does not represent the entire city view, they represent their own, I represent other views. And the last comment I'll mention is, I'm a long-term resident here, I've been here fifty-six years, and to be honest with you, the dialogue and some of the framing of how this is being handled, to me, is sinking us into a quagmire in our community, and I find it very sad.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Hoover, I live at seventy-six twenty-seven Harriet Avenue. And I've got a couple things to say, which is, really to talk about solutions. And I'd first like to start out, just about, and I'm assuming that you've all read the STAN-TIC report, all right, or at least browsed through it. And I'd just like to talk about, at least, the cover letter that went with the draft, which is, which I think is fantastic. Based on the analysis, I'm sorry, I've got a frog in my throat. Based on the analysis of the city's current supply of rental housing, there is an immediate need for rental housing at both ends of the affordability spectrum. On one end, it, on one end would be upscale amenity-rich properties that would appeal to young professionals and early retirees who currently must search outside of the city for such options. On the other end of the spectrum, it would be subsidized units with two or more bedrooms for very low-income families, which are essentially nonexistent in Richfield. Camila is very right about that. It is very nonexistent in that, all right? I will, I will admit that. My background is, I was, worked in, I worked in shelters for almost eight years, and I was a tenant organizer, and a community organizer for another three, okay? I'll, you know, I'll put my liberal street cred up against DeSantis any day of the week here. But it, but what's really important, though, is, is this, and you have to take that first part, and when DeSantis was saying, why are we building more, why are we building this, these one-bedrooms, is because of that first part, which I have to say, I was very angry with STAN-TIC and their presentation, because it almost completely ignored it. It really pushed the three-bedroom, and it never touched on the need to attract young professionals, because as we see in our rental community, we have an abundance of low-income renters. We do really need to attract upscale renters if, and part of that is, if we're going to, because with that, you're also dealing with professionalism, lawyers, doctors, people who have access, who can spend time at community meetings. When you're working two to three jobs, it's very tough to be community, be community-oriented. You know, look at Edina, they have, you know, they're much more affluent, they can spend time at meetings, and it really reflects on a lot of their citizen participation, all right? We do need to attract young urban professionals, affluent, on that end. On the other end, we have families who need three-bedroom houses, or three-bedroom apartments. That is, that is, that is key. But taking those two things, and understanding what Richfield's situation is, what is the solution? All right? The solution, I think, is pretty damn obvious. Sorry. Convert many of the one-bedroom units in the older nineteen-sixties Class C apartment buildings that STAN-TIC identified as needing renovation, and many people on the city council, the planning commission, and the HRA have talked about how bad these apartment buildings are. Well, let's renovate them into subsidized, from one-bedroom, convert them into subsidized three-bedroom units, to help families in need of housing that can meet the income, which can meet that first guideline, which is a two-to-three bedroom, and then also their second one, which is, or third one, which is subsidized units for families, so it can meet those two needs assessments in the STAN-TIC report, all right? So, it can meet that. The second thing is, okay, we've lost one-bedrooms, we've taken those away. Well, guess what? Let's replace the lost market one-bedroom units with newly constructed one-bedroom units, like those at Woodlake Plaza, and potentially at Lyndale Gardens, which would help attract that other end, which STAN-TIC identified we don't have, all right? Which is higher-income young professionals, which nobody is talking about, by the way, which is simply amazing, all right? And that, you know, and include in those, any of those developments, which I liked with Woodlake Plaza, a ten to twenty percent one-bedroom subsidized units. So, you can attract, you know, young urban professionals who don't have higher incomes. You have ten to twenty percent, even thirty percent, as subsidized units in those developments, okay? What is, what don't we need? All right, what is not the solution? Building new, large-scale, income-restricted apartment complexes with two-to-three bedrooms, such as the proposed Pillsbury Commons. While it may make Ron Clark plenty of cash, all right, to spend at the Galleria, using STAN-TIC data, it is a poor decision for Richfield, because if we build new, large-scale, income-restricted, two-to-three-bedroom rental housing, yes, we will be fulfilling a need, but without removing the one, older one-bedroom units that we have, we'll already be adding to Richfield's massive affordable housing market, and not strengthening its tax base. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Hanson, I live at seventy-six oh nine Harriet Avenue. Long night. You know, we've heard a lot of information this evening. One thing that we might want to revisit is exactly, have you been down Seventy-six Street recently? I mean, at all? Because I spend a lot of time on it. I walk it twice a day with my dog. I ride my bike, and it's new little bike trailer, you probably saw me all weekend with my bike and my dog and its little trailer behind me. And when I moved to this, this neighborhood, that was a four-lane drag strip- You probably saw me all weekend with my bike and my dog and its little trailer behind me. And when I moved to this, this neighborhood, that was a four lane drag strip. Okay? After last summer's construction, it's now a two lane, sedate, very nice, slow street. Okay? What you're talking about here, what the development is trying to do is add 70, 70 families in a one block area. Okay? My block, seven, there's seven houses on my block, on my side, there's seven houses on the other. That's 14 houses. Gee, that fits medium to high density, 12 to 24, doesn't it? Sure does. Okay? We don't need to subsidize with TIF a larger group of population that, that has a lot of issues. When you, when you subsidize, you're attracting a population that is counter to what Joe was just discussing. We are in a, in a situation where we are right at, just like Lou said, and Bob, we are right at 494 35W. We've got bus lanes, we're minutes from the Mall of America, we're minutes from Southdale, we're minutes from the airport. All of the press as of late has talked about how people are moving back into the city because, you know, it's just too darn far to drive. I myself worked in downtown Minneapolis. I recently started telecommuting in terms of working from home. I, I take the bus when I go to work or because it's summer, now I'm taking my bike. You, you're looking for people who do that sort of thing to up, upscale the, the neighborhood. When you add 70 families, that's what you're adding, is 70 families in a one block radius, there is going to be spill. Now, they're saying that, that, that is commensurate with the rest of the neighborhood. Well, if you look at ground, yeah, there's a bunch of old apartment buildings and yeah, that sure looks like those are apartment buildings. You look around the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the neighborhood between Lindale and Nicklet, 77th Street, and with the exception of that property on Lindale that is huge, what is it, Gateway? Is that, that's what it's called? Right across from the SA?
Lindale Commons.
Lindale Commons. There are no apartment buildings. There are no apartment buildings there. You're putting, you want to put 70 families where there's just 14 families per block and you're going to put 70 and you're going to pay for it for 30 years. That's not what you want. You want homes there. You want, you want townhomes, anything other than what he's proposing. That's 70, seven zero. There's 14 families on my block. You're adding 70. That's a huge difference. And that's not what we want. And you will continue to see me on my bike pulling my dog in its little trailer. And when you do, I want you to think about the fact that I'm riding down that road with my helmet on and I'm not wanting to dodge 70 extra families in their cars. 14 I can deal with, 17, 70 I can't. And when you add company, that's 140. Okay? It's just not the 70 that you move in there. It's all their friends too.
Apologies, ahead of time, I'm a little under the weather. I've been kind of waiting to get an opportunity, so my thoughts aren't going to be completely strung together as they usually are on, on this evening. There's just, I'm going to give it to you in random thoughts because-
Could you first state your name and address?
Stephanie Miller, 6804 James. Existing housing stock is already affordable. I know we've talked about that tonight, but I really want to land that again. Single-family housing, apartment housing, I think we're already answering that call. I think it's something that, you know, when you go back, again, I always use, at work, I always use the argument that math can, can be spun to tell whatever story you want. I think we've proven over the evening, the reports can be spun to tell you whatever story you want to tell. I think the key word is subjective. I think, I think you can, you can use the same report as we've seen with people who have really taken the time to study it a little thorough, more thoroughly than I have. They've been able to come up and support their argument, one way or another, with the same report. And I think that just goes to prove that it's still a very gray area and very subjective. I think if, you know, I heard that Ron Clark has listened to the community and I think, I think that's also a very gray area. I think if he had listened to the community, I think the proposals that would have come back would have reflected higher, upper middle class or something that's embedding a, you know, a vetted, well-known local property that is part of the, the unit. It, it just, it seems to kind of like reshuffle the deck, but it's the same seven cards that keep getting reshuffled over and over again. I think if there was a true listening to the community, I think the next proposal that would have come back would have reflected a, a higher mix between subsidized housing and upper middle class or, or a lower density or something along those lines. I just think that, I think it, it's again, a very gray area that, when, when you're making that statement. I think, you know, has anything else been vetted for this property? Again, I go back to, you know, I'm not even convinced that we need more housing stock. I'm convinced that we actually need more amenities overall for the, the community. I think I had a personal little celebration in my house when I knew Pizzoluce was coming to town. I mean, it's one of those things that I just kind of look at this property and I know it's a very difficult property. I know that it's, you know, has contamination. I know it has all of these other things to it and I just think to myself, you know, has, have we looked really outside the box on this? Which again, leads me to the same comment that I bring every time I come and talk about that. And that is, is what is the strategy overall for the city? I mean, is the strategy overall for the city to be a bedroom workforce community for all of the other suburbs? Or is it to attract a mix of individuals? Respectfully, I come from a blended, blended family, so I, I kind of bristle when I'm, I'm lumped in with a, you know, the commentary that, you know, I, I'm, I'm worried about those people or whatever. You know, those people are my family. They're, they're who I call, you know, siblings and, and whatnot and, and stepchildren. So I, I, that's not my point. My point is, is we've got a, we've got a, a construction company, a developer that's coming in. I, I, I think it's, that is, is, is going to multiple different government troughs and, and reaping the benefits out of all of those troughs. The gentleman that was here, who's no longer here, I think he makes a very valid point. The, the, the government system is set up to, to make this allowable. He's not doing anything wrong. It's just, the government is set up to, to do this and I think it's, in this case, it's not doing it justice. I think it's pitting neighbor against neighbor. And I think again, if the proposal had come back and had been more varied use, we wouldn't be having these conversations or these arguments. And personally, I, on a personal level, I find it very difficult to swallow when, you know, it's kind of like when you hear that the CEO of a company that we've bailed out gets a, you know, a million dollar bonus or something along those lines and, and the, and the stock is in the tank. It's kind of like, why are we rewarding somebody who's gaming the system and, and really not answering what the community has come back to ask for? And the, last but not least, the examples that were brought forth as, you know, like, again, you know, the slideshow went, the PowerPoint went fairly quickly. It was one of those things that it was like, well, in this, this one, and this one, and this one, and this one. And as you looked, it was 32 units and 40 units and 32 units and whatever. And we're talking about a, a mix that is almost double than what of the, than the examples that were brought forth. And so I, I, I agree. You can't, you can't compare apples and oranges and I think that, in that case, was apples and oranges. So I just think, I, I think the jury's out. I think things are subjective. I think we're gaming the system and I think not everybody's listening to the concerns that are coming to the table. So that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Colin Cosse, 6718 Fourth Avenue South, right behind City Hall. God, this is a, this is a tough one tonight, isn't it? I think a lot of people are bringing up questions that are really valid points about situations in our community. A lot of things that I think people would like to see differently. The aging stock of affordable housing, the question of the TIF, the question of whether or not new affordable housing will create additional decay in the existing housing. I think the one thing that we have to keep in mind is that this one site is not going to solve Richfield's issues. We're not going to solve the decaying affordable housing by 70 new units. They're still going to be there. But we do have to look at this site and say, what's right for this site? And I think there's already been some guidance in that regard. You have to go back to, what is this site guided from a comp plan? And then, do you have an applicant that has a proposal that meets that? Does it meet the zoning or where the zoning will ultimately go? Is it sensitive, sensitively planned? I would say that this plan is more sensitively laid out than maybe the previous plan, so I think it's headed in the right direction. The question of diversity of housing has come up and I think this actually does a pretty good job at providing new housing stock in our community in terms of affordable and rental. It's, it's not going to necessarily solve the issues of market rate housing. It's not going to get a whole lot of young lawyers or doctors to move into that site. But look at the site. That, that's not going to be a site that's going to draw away from someone who wants to live in high-end rental housing in Uptown or in a loft downtown. That's not that site. Look at the characteristics of that site in particular. I think it's important also to realize that this type of housing, workforce housing is a good stepping stone for people in the community. I moved to Richfield in 2003. Moved to a, I guess you'd consider it a market rate rental project, the Oaks Unpleasant, has plenty of amenities, similar to the amenities that Mr. Clark is proposing. And it was an appealing thing for my wife and I when we got out of graduate school, moving back from Oregon. And we, within about 11 months, bought a house just back here. It was great. You could move into Richfield, there was an affordable place to live. It was an appealing location for both of our jobs. She was a speech pathologist in the school district, so it was really close. And we decided to stay. We have three kids and we'll probably be here for life. I think, back to that point, it's, it's important to realize that it's, this type of housing, workforce housing can be a stepping stone and it can keep people in Richfield and allow them to buy the homes that seniors are living in, the single-family homes that maybe need to go to younger families as they, as they grow, as they gain in salary and can afford more and absorb the single-family housing stock as well. So with that, I just would like to say that I'm in support of the proposal.
Thank you.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Carries? Okay, this, sorry. This is an opportunity then for the commission to, to get the feedback that they need if there's questions that have arisen during this. I want to thank, thank everybody for, for the input. I really appreciate the fact that you were very civil and, and respected each other. So I think that this is very, very worthwhile and, and nice to hear everyone get their comments in. No question? To Bob?
I thought maybe someone else would prefer to lead. I have some observations. Going, my comments were made while I was reading the letter from Mr. SuSag that was in this massive volume of information here. So I'm going to try to reference documents that were involved here as I make comments. The first thing is, in section three or paragraph three, this is described as a neighborhood-friendly plan. I had planned a different course of action, but I don't want to alienate the chair. So I will just comment that, consider that Richfield citizens returned 1,023 responses to the neighborhood group and all but three were opposed to this project. We're, we're in support of this project. Only three opposed. The city received between 100 and 120 responses, according to Mr. Stark, and approximately 65% of those were in favor, while 15 were opposed and 20 were non-committal. 15 and 20%. Richfield Patch this afternoon showed 225 responses when I looked. 56% were negative. 44 were supportive and one person couldn't care less. Did I misspeak on those? The, the opposition, let me repeat it for, to make sure. 120 responses were opposed to this project, to the citizens. 65 were opposed to it in the city response and 60, 56% were opposed to it in the Richfield Patch survey. The letter says, "This is a walkable community." A consultant says, in one of the documents, somewhat with a score of 55 points out of 100. That was an F in my school. Page two, number five. "The city has attempted since at least 2009 to sell the property." Yes, sell it to Mr. Clark. "I believe if Mr. Holter, George Holter is in the audience, we could negotiate a sale this evening." That's, in paragraph 10, "Until tonight, the planning commission has never been asked to make a decision about this project and the alleged repeated assurances of support from others always came with conditions." Page three, number three, "Apartment buildings with 52 units, but omitting the fact that there are only 46 underground and 37 discretionary," my word, "surface parking spaces, not including nine proof-of-parking spaces. Further, the sidewalk to Pillsbury on the south end, described in the Connolly Development response," page two, number two, "will encourage undesirable street parking on Pillsbury. And the kids in that play area will never see the sun. There is a potential for 357 people in that development." That's the maximum by the people per unit permitted in there. Connolly Development also admits, page one, one of its response to the city- Connolly Development also admits, page one, one of its response to the city, that the development does not meet maximum coverage limits. The Connolly, there, I got my pages mixed up. There, the project has, covers 31.9% of the project and the limit is 30%. And that is a 6%, more than 6% greater amount of space taken up with this project than is permitted by the comprehensive plan. The, I'm sorry, the maximum lot limit coverage.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes?
Can, the lot coverage, can you tell me again where you're referencing? I'm trying to keep, keep up with this.
It's on the, I said, the, in the response to your document that, well, this is the problem, so. Okay. Page one. In the Connolly Development LLC response to Mr. Lance Bernard, City of Richfield.
Is it at a tab?
Tab four, page one. It says, please indicate the lot coverage, the maximum lot coverage is 30%. The response from Connolly, again, I don't know if it's Connolly or Clark or two other Richfield properties or REC company we're dealing with on these things. Building site coverage is 31.9% and is indicated on the revised site plan. It's flat-out, plain and simple.
Thank you. I was just looking for the location of that.
Also, Connolly simply ignored the city's request on page four in that same section with regard to the request that it should indicate all, if any, locations for snow storage prior to its removal from the site. There is no response to that. On page four, there is a reference to rental amounts, continued from page three, and it reads, "Families, family must earn about $28,000 per year to afford the average one-bedroom home." Rental home they're talking about. Pillsbury Commons will have $797 for one bedroom, $945 for two, $1,091 for three. Is that the total cost or will they be required to pay utilities, phone, TV and other expenses? If so, then that certainly changes what the, the rate is. The Urban study states in boldface, page 23, that's a different tab, "A full-time worker earning between $6.15, the current minimum wage, and $21.80 per hour could afford a unit there." Excuse me, but the full-time minimum wage would be $12,792 a year, but, but his own chart on page 34 says the minimum for one of the units here is $18,888, which means his example is $6,000 per year short to qualify to be in there. And, by the way, did you know that Kmart is one of Richfield's biggest employers? Yes, I believe it was Mr. Urban's report that says Kmart has 100 employees. By the way, is Joe Urban related to Richfield employee Julie Urban? If so, we should know that.
No, he is not.
Thank you. On page five, dispelling myths. Mr. Susag should have known that the members of the minority groups are already in the majority in our schools. He should also know that it's not reasonable to expect the city of Richfield to grow, that will grow to more than 42,000 by 2040. Think about that. Many of these concern, concerns stem from those, quote, "faulty assumptions and erroneous statements of fact." But I'd like to put the density in perspective for Mr. DeSantis in particular. If we rezoned his property 100 by 130, he can have eight units on it. I'm sure his neighbors would be pleased. On page eight, in Kendra Lindahl of, of a letter, I don't know what section that is, of AICP, whomever that is, insults immediate neighbors and, and by association, all residents by saying, quote, "Low-income housing developments using low-income housing tax credits has no impact on property crimes in distressed communities." I'm offended and I think it's incredible. They're suggesting that the neighbors in that area are living in a distressed community. People who live in affordable housing projects are senior citizens on fixed income, it says in the same letter. The disabled, low and moderate-income workers, the recently unemployed and single parents and families with children. These people are not criminals. I agree. They are already living and, they already live and work in Richfield. So are these, the people we're looking to get in here? The disabled, the low and moderate-income workers, the recently unemployed? Our gracious, single parents and families with children are there. Is this workforce? When Russ Susag was on the city council, he and I discussed what I called incrementalism. That is developments that contribute to the decline of adjacent areas that will offer the next opportunity for redevelopment. It's the self-fulfilling prophecy. I'd like to read, I'm almost done. I'd like to read from a, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency discussion paper by Spencer Agnew. It states on page seven. Briggs et al., 1999, "The evidence suggests that smaller dispersed public housing projects are the most likely to generate positive property value impacts to the greater neighborhood." Later on, he says, "Property value impacts increase with project scale up to a certain threshold beyond which impacts become increasingly negative as scale increases." The study, a study in Maryland, found that nearby property values were positively impacted as long as there were fewer than six sites and eight units within 50 feet. When Section Eight units were found in concentration above these amounts, the impacts were negative. It also says, "Affordable housing is most likely to generate positive results when located in low-poverty neighborhoods in low concentrations, typically less than 50 units." It also says, "Property managed by for-profit organizations commonly have impacts on property values, but the benefits tend to be less sustained over time compared to the nonprofit projects." And, "Research suggests that small scattered-site projects perform best among public housing projects. Large projects typically, typically have the most benefits on property values in low-income neighborhoods, while the opposite is true in higher-income neighborhoods where large projects typically have mixed impacts." Mr. Chairman? I lost my page again. I have many more concerns about this proposal, but the most important of all my concerns is the citywide citizen concern. I didn't count how many stopped to express their opposition as I was on my way out of church or walking down the street or in a store. Just two days ago, one resident who is maybe even older than I am drove into my driveway and said, "Don't you blankety-blank people in City Hall know who you're working for?" I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes?
Chair Jeps. Just to comment, in Richfield, there's less than 1% of the area is actually industrial property. You can't, if, if you have more jobs, the market will expand and you can't grow market without, without jobs. It's prudent to state that it is right on a railroad and it is partially, and help me with the, the definition, already zoned industrial.
Correct.
Thank you. Chair Jeps, can I just revise? When I say industrial, we don't mean big smokestacks. You know, we're not talking about, you know, big pollution. There's many types of industrial properties. Thank you.
Other comments? Gordon?
Obligation to zone in a manner that's consistent with our comp plan or an obligation to revise the comp plan. In this case, I, I do have to express that I'm, I'm disappointed by and large by the tone and some of the ad hominem attacks, the personal attacks, in, in an effort to persuade because I think that's utterly unhelpful. I think if there's one thing I can appreciate, it's a well-reasoned, well-thought position. And in this case, some of the feedback I think we've gotten is asking about the turkey dinner and, and all the comments focus on how the punch tasted. It, it's utterly unrelated to the content that, that we're looking at, which in fact is the seven-part test to determine whether or not it's appropriate to look at this as a PUD or whether or not it's appropriate to rezone the area and whether or not the proposed project actually fits the space. In this case, we have a piece of property that is in sore need of redevelopment, is in fact in need of environmental remediation. I drive past it all the time. I live a couple of blocks away. I would much rather see a $12 million project that has, if I understand correctly, a cost per unit or an expenditure of unit, per unit of roughly $140,000 or $150,000. I would much rather see that than vacant city garages and a dilapidated funeral home. Ultimately, I think this project as proposed does meet the comp plan guidelines. Emotional distraction aside, the, the need to focus on shiny objects that are actually irrelevant, whether or not there was a building deficiency in some other project, isn't terribly relevant to whether or not the applicant has submitted a project that actually meets the requirements. In this instance, the obligation of this commission is to determine whether or not a, the peg that's presented is round and if the hole is round, we allow the peg to be inserted. In this case, ultimately, I think the revisions to the plan, and I do think it's a bit disingenuous from some of the folks I've spoken with, with respect to the, the welcoming of input. I see some of the citizen input as an attempt to railroad or distract from the project rather than actually make an improvement to it. I, I think the fact of the matter is those folks in opposition, no amount of change or modification, short of not putting the project through, would have actually satisfied that group. Ultimately, I, I think, and I can say candidly, and I spend a lot of time in Richfield, I've had one person express an interest, an, an opposition interest in conversation. And that one person essentially was saying, "I wonder what this will do relative to the schools." I candidly don't believe that 70 units of anything is going to tip any balance anywhere when we're talking about a community of 70,000, sorry, 30-plus thousand people. And, and ultimately, this is consistent with the comp plan that envisions the 494 corridor as being business-intensive use with a fade into the neighborhood that's adjacent with increasing, or rather decreasing, intensity of usage. So I, I understand, you know, some of the emotion that's involved in it. I understand some of the sky-is-falling knee-jerk reaction. Ultimately, I, I think it's, it's unfounded. You have a very substantial hurdle in what people are going to have to pay. The STANTEC study clearly shows a need relative to the community and within the community for two- and three-bedroom units. And ultimately, the market rent that's going to be charged for those units to offset the fact that we have 30-year-old properties that sit, the, the net effect is that it's more likely than not that the other properties, the properties that are under pressure, are going to be forced to upgrade. Suggesting, suggesting that it's going to spiral into dilapidation, I think, is unrealistic. Just like if your neighbor improves their house, are you going to let yours fall in or is your other neighbor going to let it fall in? Ultimately, I think that's an erroneous conclusion based on what, what I think is, is a misinterpretation of the underlying study, which is, we don't have two- and three-bedroom units in Richfield, much less affordable two- or three-bedroom units in Richfield. So ultimately, I think this is a positive redevelopment. Folks can suggest townhomes all they wish or single-family homes all they wish. I think it's very apparent by looking at what the work that the HRA has done, the very good work that the HRA has done in an attempt to stabilize single-family homes in our community, that we, even as a city, can't sell single-family homes or lots fast enough for redevelopment. There simply is not the market. And I think the STANTEC study goes on to show that with the tremendous spike in single-family homes where people can't sell them. So ultimately, they rent them out. The notion that somehow throwing townhouses or fit, single-family homes on this space is economically viable, I think is crazy. The number of people who I know personally who are underwater on their townhomes, the notion that you would throw up townhomes and suddenly, because it, it's an already depressed market relative to those pieces of property, it's just simply not realistic. I, I think from a burden the hand versus two in the bush perspective, I think this is an optimal opportunity to redevelop what is a blighted area in a manner that's not inconsistent with the surrounding area and in a manner that is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Tom? Maureen? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sure on this letter that's in, oh, excuse me, I always forget. This letter that's in Tab One, it's after the STANTEC presentation. It's dated April 4th, addressed to Melissa Pearlman. Is there any objection by staff or city council or HRA in what the developer is saying back in like, for instance, June 14th, 2011? Is that all accepted by city as correct? Because that, I found it interesting on the level of support that the city and HRA seems to be given. I mean, is that a correct letter?
Sorry. My kids got me up at 5:30, so.
What?
My kids got me up at 5:30 this morning, so I'm a little slow on the uptake.
Oh, no, it's after this STANTEC presentation under Tab One.
Okay. So it says, "On June 14th, the city council unanimously approved a resolution consenting to a process for consideration of a housing TIF district for Pillsbury Commons on the former site." That's true. In the In the staff report, it was noted that the developer would pay fair market value for the land, that's true. The plan reviewed at that meeting was for 70 units of affordable housing. That's true.
Is it true that they essentially agreed to an option agreement?
Yes.
With the understanding that this was 100% affordable at that time?
Yes. When the city council approved the option agreement on June 14, 2011, there was a resolution attached to that, that decision, that was, the council approved the resolution, it was number...
And that, at that point, the city council knew that this was 100% affordable?
Correct. In the resolution, in the resolution, it stated, "The proposal is for 70 units of 100% affordable rental housing."
Oh, because I thought I had heard some comment at the study session that basic city council was saying they did not know that it was going to be. So I just found that interesting. I just wanted to confirm that what is in that letter is accurate.
Yes. The, I think the reference that you might be recalling is that there was a council member who said the staff report referred to a component, an affordable housing component, and that is accurate. That's what the staff report said. In the resolution, it said 100% affordable.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. As far as I'm concerned, I did, it all of a sudden struck me, when I was reading the cost of the rents and the affordability issue, that the people I hired while employed at the University of Minnesota over the last three years, well, I was employed longer, but the people I hired over the last three, four years, would all be able to afford these apartments. They were all college graduates. They were all, happened to be Caucasian, not that that matters. They all were young people starting out, and when young people start out, these are the kind of rents they pay. I actually asked one of them if they would be willing to come into, or what they thought of a development like this. And she said, "Well, it would be wonderful to have the amenities, it really would." But I currently live in a place that's $40 cheaper in Uptown, and she said $40 a month is $40 a month. I thought about my employees. They are very nice, hardworking, hoping in their future to make more money and move up, own their own homes. But right at this time in their life, they see this as very positive, very attractive housing. I also thought of my children. They're lucky enough to be married, but if by death or divorce, that situation changed. They also would need cheaper housing than what they have. I doubt whether they could maintain the homes, because the mortgage would just be too great for a single person. And this would be a wonderful place for them to live. I certainly don't want them living in the apartments on Cedar and the apartments in much of the rest of Richfield. As I thought about employees, as I thought about children, I thought this is a place that would be nice for them to live. Now unfortunately, to some people's perspective, my children happen to be minority. As our case study person 36 years ago said to us, "Please think about leaving Richfield." We chose to stay because we believed that people in Richfield were better than the caseworkers thought, but I wonder. Thank you.
Commissioner Ruble, did you have a point?
Thank you. Actually, I was enthralled by Commissioner Vazeki and Scalia. Nice presentation. We have a lot of elephants in the room. Some of them we haven't talked about. We may have a whole herd of them. One is that there seems to be some underlying resentment that Ron Clark will make some money off of this. Ron Clark is a businessman. He's there to make money. Matter of fact, it's just going to happen. Whatever he develops, I'm sure he's going to make money on. He's not there to lose money. Nonetheless, there are people, I think, who are somewhat adverse to the idea that this is done with low-income tax credits. Very good deal for those who invest in them, not a very good deal for Richfield at the moment. Ron Clark, being the businessman that he is, I think that if he sat on this side of the table as a businessman, would not accept this deal. The purchase price of the property is way too low. The addition of TIF is ludicrous, in my opinion. And we seem to have forgotten that this property ultimately was supposed to substantially contribute to offsetting the cost of the new garage. It is not, in fact, going to do that under these circumstances. That's just one elephant in the room. The other that has me concerned is simply the concentration of affordable housing in this particular area, not just this project. The only other two proposals that we have had for the city-owned property in that area, with the exception of one inkling of an idea, have been only all affordable housing. The 51-unit senior housing unit that would have been across the street, all affordable housing. We all remember that one, okay? The other one was, what, about 20 units for individuals recovering from brain injury? That also would have been 100% affordable housing, okay? We've had two other inklings. One was a charging station with a coffee shop that would have employed people, according to the person who was proposing it, at about $12 an hour. You know, not really high-paying jobs. And the other is, I understand it, that we right now have some proposal to do a, an extension of another auto dealership or repair shop or something in the area. Way back, we rejected a proposal by Culvers to settle on a piece of property, city-owned property, that was in that area, correct?
Commissioner Ruble and Chair Jabs, I'm not aware of the planning commission rejecting that.
The city in general. It was, it was a proposal by Culvers that eventually got rejected in one form or fashion because they couldn't comply with building either above-ground or below-ground parking or something. Council mem, was it above-ground? Housing above the restaurant. So we haven't done a very good job with these, these pieces of property, and yet, this particular property that this proposal is focused on, is one that really was presented to the citizens of Richfield as something that was going to offset the cost of the new city garage. And the new city garage was, was tons of millions of dollars, right?
Yeah, I don't have the figure, but it was a, yes.
You know, let's say roughly $14 million. This, this project isn't going to do that. The other elephant that we have in the room, and maybe not, not an elephant, but more a 600-pound gorilla, 900-pound gorilla, is the Met Council. We're not going to be able to buck the Met Council. I'm sorry, it's just a reality. Lake Elmo tried that, lost. Big time. It's not going to happen. They say you have to put in housing, you got to put in the housing. I do not know, however, where in God's name we're going to put it. If, if in, in an article, it was reported Sunday that Eagan has no more really developable land, and I would hazard a guess that most of us in this room right now would not think of Eagan as, as an area that didn't have developable land, what kind of an adjective would you use for Richfield? I mean, we've got no place to go but way up. You know, we're talking about a four-story limitation on this piece of property, that's scratching the surface, you know? So, so in a way, this, this project is inadequate. It's not going to really solve nor scratch our, our real problem with housing, according to the Met Council. In this instance, I don't even think it's a very good start, from that point of view. Mr. Susak made a point, that there does not seem to be an objection to the physical structure of the proposal itself, and yet, we did hear one from somebody, and actually I took notice of it and started thinking about it. I hadn't thought too heavily about it, but the total number of people that would be added to that area, that is a powerful amount. You quoted, what, 360 people or something like that, if they maxed out? That is a lot of people. Have, have we thought about that? That is a lot of people to suddenly be in what we want to call the urban small town, you know? We like to think of Richfield as some sort of a small urban town out there, rural town or whatever, small community, small houses, you know, small number of people, and suddenly we're going to start being really urban. And I don't think the city is quite ready for this, which begs the question, where was everybody when the comp plan was put together? This, this designation has been in the comp plan for quite some time, for the city garage. Where have people been? Where were people when that 51-unit housing unit was proposed? For seniors only, not even upscale, upcoming, new graduate lawyers or whatever. I mean, people are not paying attention to this stuff. All right, so now we come to this proposal, and Ron Clark has put a lot of work into this, I commend him for that. The architecture is nice, I think Mr. Tucci has done some nice stuff here, but we really haven't discussed what our housing policy is. We've got a new STANTEC report, and we're rushing to say, "Oh, gosh, we can justify this rental housing by this STANTEC thing," whereas I don't really think we're thinking deep enough into this. The concentration of affordable housing alone, for me, in this area that has been proposed in the past, and it's being proposed right now, is something that causes me grave concern, that we're really not sure what we're doing. Mr. Vazeki made a good point on housing. Townhouses may not be the way to go, single-family houses may not be the way to go, and yet, alternately in the paper, you'll find articles that'll say, "Oh, things are loosening up. Single-home ownership is the vote." There was an article last Sunday in the paper that spoke to that. I think things are changing in such a way that we really can't, right now, have any reliable information on that. We're guessing. Just as we're guessing on whether or not an affordable housing unit will have an effect on the surrounding neighborhood. The studies that I've seen usually look at housing that is put next to a very affluent area. And like it or not, Richfield is not what I would consider to be affluent, and that test of whether or not it would affect housing values in the area has not been tested. An affordable housing unit placed in an area that has housing units about the same cost as, as the surrounding housing, may have a totally different outcome. It may really affect housing value. "Oh, God, don't move there, it's a low-income community." This really causes me some, some concern, yet at the same time, I agree with Commissioner Vazeki. It's a nice place. It looks good, seems to have a lot of nice amenities, but at the same time, is it right for Richfield now and the future of Richfield? Remember, this unit encumbers Richfield for, for what, 30 years? It's a long time. Do we want to encumber our future generation? I'm sure I won't be here in 30 years. Do we want to encumber the community for 30 years with this kind of unit? I think we ought to think about that.
Okay. I've struggled with this, back and forth. I've listened to all the comments, I've heard yays, nays, and all the way around. And I mean, I guess my big comment, and my comment to Barry the other day, was that as we move forward, Tom brought up the comprehensive plan, is that this group is such that's organized themselves, and this is about the third time I've said this, but keeps themselves together and participates in the next comprehensive plan to make sure that things like this are taken care of. And as I said, there's a pyramid that goes on as you go through the process of government, and the most input that the citizens have is at that very bottom, where they get the chance to really organize and put together their thoughts and, and get their thoughts put into actions from the ground up, and that's why they call it grassroots. So you need to, to consider that as you go along and make sure that you get your, get your points in there. You know, I think that Ron Clark has done a nice job relative to, to putting, I will say he has listened to what's going on. He has a prescribed building that now has to have a certain amount of funding, and has to have the, the various funding efforts that make it as it is. Based on that, he's listened to what the community has said and made the modifications that were necessary to help appease some of the, the problems that the citizens have had. And so when I looked at each of these pieces, and I looked through what the comp plan says, I kind of just went through step by step. And I think, I think everyone's, that I've heard so far agrees that the comp plan is, is met. If you do this, it's met. And then as I start to go down the zoning ordinances and the, the issues that staff has laid out for us, where it becomes a little bit sticky for me and a little bit out of whack, is the fact, does it integrate nicely into the neighborhood? And I listened to one person talk about the 76th Street and, and the modifications and the money that was spent, and thanks to some, some creative funding, we were able to get a nice stretch there along 76 that modified that, did some traffic calming, created bike paths, slowed down everything that goes on, and makes it much more livable and walkable for everyone. So I hate to see that destroyed after we've gone and, and, and put that all into place by whatever goes into that particular site. But in particular, we know that it's going to be the only access and, and output as far as, as far as the traffic, or at least most of it is going to go out that way, I don't know where else it's going to go. So you're still going to get that volume of traffic going in and out on 76th Street that you wouldn't otherwise have had. As far as, again, Ron Clark's efforts, I think he's done a great job of, of making sure that the neighborhood was protected, per se, and to a point that almost, we've now created this, another buffer along 76th Street that in fact has inhibited, or will inhibit, the neighborhood from really making these people part of, of the livable community. And we've kind of done an injustice there, from my perspective, in that when we did that, we did create a moat, and although it confines itself and can be self-sustaining within, our problems have been in the community is that not enough of the apartment dwellers participate in the community. And if we're ever going to have a community that, that is, is community-based and continues to strive and make great, great progress, the only way we get that is if everybody participates. And when we put up a building that now faces in towards the parking lot instead of out towards the neighbors, we've as much as said, "We don't want porches anymore on, on the houses that we have." And I, I don't like the feel of that. I don't like the way that it doesn't take it into the neighborhood and make things happen. I'm all for affordable housing, and I don't see anything wrong personally with, with the transaction that goes on. I think it gives people a place to live, and, and it gives them a nice place to live. I think the design is, is wonderful, except for the, the features that bring it back in to condense it into this small area where people become all of a sudden confined and away from the community. I noticed also that staff had reported in their, in their findings that that was one of the pieces, and that just sparked a thaw, is the front porches and not have... And that just sparked a thaw, is the front porches and not having that out towards the community itself. I just think that when we go through this and we look at everything that's happened here, we still have a lot of questions to answer, whether this really fits into the neighborhood and whether it's desirable and a unified environment within what we need. It talks about it being within itself that way, but does it really bring in the whole neighborhood? So from my perspective, there's still a lot of questions here. On one hand, we need it. On the other hand, I can see that there's some real issues here. And I think bringing the people into the neighborhood is much more important than having them shut off from the neighborhood, the way that current design is.
Thanks, Chair. I'll be very quick. I guess I have three primary points. My first one is, thank you for the respectful process that we've had here this evening. And relatively respectful since, I don't know, January. The emails, the phone calls, the letters, the... With some exception, they've been at least cordial. And I think that that's appreciated. You see news coverage even in Bloomington when they're trying to build the Target. And like, it's very rambunctious down there. And we didn't have that here tonight. And it's at least as polarizing of a question. The second is, this project is a result of the comp plan. And I agree with what Commissioner Vazekki has said. And it brings a point that at least everybody sitting at this table and that table over there has heard me say in the past, we've got a comp plan that puts high and relatively high density next to things that aren't. And there's going to be a buffer zone, and it's going to be ugly. And I don't mean ugly from an aesthetic standpoint. I mean ugly from a policy standpoint. At some point, we have to have the conversation of, what's that going to look like? If we really are going to develop the city, as the residents who participate in the process have indicated, we want to develop the city. And I think this is what you get. And I actually, I have to commend Ron Clark that with the most recent version, that you've done a great job of putting in as close to a buffer as I can possibly imagine when you've got single-family residential next to something with some density. There's just no seamless, beautiful, wonderful way of doing that, no matter how hard you try. At some point, you're gonna have more homes on a lot than you're going to have across the street without some other magical means. And I don't know what that is. And we certainly don't have the available land space to put in, you know, massive amounts of green space to separate the two. It's just not a reality here. So those are first two. And the third one, I'm obviously gonna be supportive of the motion to continue this because it makes me nervous making decisions when we don't have an entire packet put together for us. So we'll all be making that motion shortly, unless Commissioner Kasper has something else he'd like to add. Because I think without knowing the entire world that we're about to decide on, I think it behooves us to hold off on that. And as a note to staff, my question's, when that debate comes in four weeks, do you really have the tools that you need to make sure that some of the resident concerns from an aesthetic standpoint, the staff, there were some things, that the blending with the neighborhood and, you know, the prettiness may not have been met. That was one of the things that was brought up in your groups meeting. Does the PUD really provide you with enough of a tool in order to make sure that those things happen? And some other nuts and bolts type questions. So I'll hold those until that conversation. And otherwise, I would move to continue this to our June 25th meeting.
I would second that.
Did you have comments? I just wanna thank everybody again. Despite the fact that it really was kind of irrelevant, our scope is somewhat limited. It's, in my perspective, the use of this parcel is appropriate. And that use was defined by the community through the comprehensive plan process. And it meets a need that was identified for this type of housing. So I'm also going to support the motion to continue the hearing.
Yes.
And only if you want, Commissioner Jabs, Chairman Jabs. I'm certainly willing to address some of the issues that have been discussed tonight.
The...I think we'll not do that at this point. I think we can come back. We'll have the opportunity at the next meeting. And so I think it might be out of line if we did it at this point.
Yeah, and just so the record's clear, the only reason I burst through that PowerPoint was because of the time limitation
Understood.
that was placed. So everyone's clear on that.
Understood.
There was no intention to trick anyone or do anything like that. That was discussed with staff today, with the attorney today.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Is it appropriate for me to make the suggestion, amend that motion to include reference to giving equal time if one is... I can read it more specifically if I can find that piece of paper.
Commissioner Hall, are you suggesting that anyone who is opposed to the project gets just as much time as anyone who's in favor of the project?
Correct.
So for every five minutes of...
Yeah, but they can't...I mean, we're governed by our bylaws.
I'm attempting to point out the unrealistic nature of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I think what might help is if... There were various questions that you asked or that I think Mr. Susek wanted to address. And he would be free to do so in writing. I mean, he's made notes, I'm assuming, of the questions that were asked that he wanted to address. He can provide that in writing. And I think the commission could set a time limit. And any member of the public who wanted to respond to a question that was raised by the commission or something, or a statement that was made by the applicant, could also submit something in writing. You don't need to worry about taking testimony at a future date. Everything will be closed, and everyone will have had an equal opportunity to respond and present their information. And I would suggest setting a deadline for receiving those comments just so that you have an opportunity to review them in advance of the meeting and things aren't coming in at the last minute.
Okay, that sounds fair? Okay, good. So let's let that...Yep, go ahead.
So then, I guess to make sure that we do have plenty of timing, and I know we all receive our packets typically the Friday before a Monday meeting, I guess, staff, if you could give me a deadline to add on to that so you've got enough time to receive and distribute, I would appreciate that date for the motion.
Ideally, staff would have the response from, as City Attorney Heine said, both the developer or any, really anybody else that wants to submit some written comments about tonight's meeting. It'd be ideal to have those by June, yeah, June 15th, Friday, June 15th at 4:30.
So I would incorporate that date into an amended motion.
Okay. Does that fit your wishes? Very good. Okay. So we're looking for continued action to, first and second, to June 25th, with a June 15th deadline for written comments relative to the discussion tonight.
Do I have to second his amended motion?
You want to second it?
Well, I seconded the first one.
Go ahead. You can second.
I seconded his amended motion.
Tom, okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, so with that, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, shall be continued. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for your input this evening. Let's see, we did have some other items, don't we? Still have to go through. So thanks again for your input, and we'll see you again in a month.
Yeah, just as people are leaving the room, we will put both PowerPoint presentations on the web as soon as we get them.
The only other thing we would've had was the chip.
That's not a city document.
Okay, John, just a question on the other two items. And we don't have to really do those at this point. We can...Item number two and three of new business? Do we have to make any motion relative to that?
The recommended motion for both items two and three would be to continue those to the June 25th meeting. For lack of information to make an action on those.
Okay.
So moved on items two and three?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Kerry's, thank you. Okay, on to old business. Any old business?
I'm...
Oh, sorry.
I do.
Okay. Your own business?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Excellent. John, from our last meeting, there was an inquiry as to the CVS. Has anybody in staff had an opportunity to look into the discussion we had when they were developing that relative to 24-hour status?
Yes, we have. There were...First of all, the code doesn't limit hours of operation. And there was not anything in the approvals that were granted by the planning commissioner or city council. There was mention of concern about the hours that delivery trucks would come and go. And that was made a stipulation of approval, was that delivery truck hours would be limited.
Thank you.
Okay. On to the Leoson reports. Community Services Advisory Commission, Advisory Commission.
I did not...I was so busy doing this, I didn't prepare a report. I'm sorry.
No report. City Council?
No update.
No update. Housing Redevelopment Authority?
Well, surprisingly, they had a very busy month. I don't know what they could've possibly been talking about. No. Couple of things from the HRA. They did set a...decide to have a public hearing regarding the sale of the HRA land that this particular parcel involves. But we're gonna hear about that next month, and that'll be fun. But what's really exciting, there were four of the Richfield rediscovered lots were sold. We've got four new single-family homes being built. And I don't know how the architect did it, but one of them has a significant number of bedrooms that they crammed into that space. And it looks like it's gonna be a nice, real nice facility, or a real nice home for for what I would imagine is a multi-generational family that's gonna occupy that space. Or at least, that's what I'd do with...I don't know, there was like seven bedrooms or something like that. And then the three others, you know, they all looked great. And I thought that was a nice indication of how the market in this city may, may just be slightly possibly ticking upward.
Thank you. Richfield School Board. No report. Transportation, Commissioner Marine? Okay. And Chamber of Commerce, anything?
The 27th Annual Salute to Small Business will be May 30th. U.S. Olympian Kerry Talafson is gonna be speaking. And Lafayette Melson and Plath and Barrett Lawn Care are gonna be inducted into the Small Business Hall of Fame. Two scholarships for RHS student and AHA student will also be passed out, those being sponsored by Bernie's Montessori and Richfield Bloomington Honda. The first-ever Chamber Express, which was the induction of nine new members and really a show-and-tell about what the community has to offer for prospective members, happened just recently. And on June 27th, the monthly luncheon will feature health initiatives with respect to Dootown, as well as an update on the Wellington Kmart redevelopment.
Thank you. Any other items?
New business?
Go ahead.
Let's see, at the upcoming study session, I think it's clear we need to revisit the use of TIF in as it concerns the comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, staff, mark that down as an option. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of closing this?
I'd like to move that we close the meeting.
Can I second it?
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.